Enfield Board of Education, February 25th, 2025. If we could all stand for a moment of silence and pledge with Dean.
Most people do a moment of silence for some tragedy or something that's happened. I'd just like to take this time, give a few seconds to think about how fortunate we are to be here today.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands our nation, under God, in the visible liberty and justice of all.
Okay. All right, fire evacuation announcement. In the unlikely event of a fire, you can exit out the rear doors of the chambers and out to the parking lot, or you can go out these side doors here, first left down the stairs, and then out to the parking lot. Kathy, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Gauss?
Here.
Mr. Kober?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Pickett?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Mrs. Akri?
Here.
Dr. Kalman?
Here.
Mrs. Cushman?
Here.
Chairwoman Riley?
Here.
Okay, moving on to board guests. Enfield High School Program of Studies update.
Yeah, come on up. I'd like to welcome Dave White, District Counseling Coordinator and Enfield High School Principal Erin Clark. They're going to provide the board with a brief update regarding the program of studies as they begin to, while they're wrapping up this school year, but already begin for planning for the scheduling of next school year.
Good evening, thank you for having us. Mr. White and I are looking forward to sharing some updates about our current programming and course offerings at EHS, including a roadmap to restore some of what was lost last year. When we think about all the things we're proud of at EHS, one of the things we're most proud of is our program of studies. And Aristotle said that knowing yourself is the beginning of all wisdom. And we think that's a reminder to play to our strengths and restore some of what was lost last year. Since 2016, when we merged the two high schools, we've been able to offer students a tremendous amount of variety and course offerings and programmings that we're really proud of. We want to talk about what we are offering currently to provide an overview. You can change this slide. Students can take classes at Enfield High School where they earn college credit. These are called dual enrollment courses. Examples are AP courses and courses they can take in collaboration with CT State, such as some of the ISNUTUCC classes EHS students have taken over the years, chemistry, accounting, graphic design. Mr. White will hit on this in more detail, but dual enrollment courses allow students to explore college-level coursework and earn college credit, saving valuable time and money. Whether students are interested in attending college or pursuing another post-secondary journey, there are so many pathways available to students at EHS. We have pathways in construction, engineering, business, marketing, and more. And many of our graduates pursue courses in medicine. So this year, one of our updates to the program of studies is we were able to expand our course offerings in the medical field. This year, we're offering a new course, UConn ECE Medical Terminology, an introduction to the mastery of medical terms, disease processes, terminology, and more. In addition, recognizing the teacher shortage, we also expanded courses in the education pathway this year. We're so fortunate that many Enfield graduates come back to be educators in Enfield, and we think this is a powerful lever to grow our own next generation of educators in Enfield. The new Intro to Special Education course, the UConn ECE course, has been very popular with students, as has the new If You Love It, Teach It course, a more general overview of pedagogy and teaching and learning. Other pathways we offer are STEM-related fields, sciences, audiovisual, communication, and more. Many of our courses are designed to provide authentic experiences for students where they can apply learning in real contexts. For example, automotive students apply their learning as they service cars for educators and other people in our community. Our wood students design and build functional products, such as the shed presented here previously. Our community action learning students identify needs in the community and implement action steps to address those needs. These are just a few examples. We're also really proud to highlight our integrated coursework where students with special needs learn alongside their non-disabled peers in high-interest programs like Unified Sports, Integrated Art, and Unified Sound. These programs have been extremely popular and impactful, leading to a more inclusive culture and ensuring our students are learning in an integrated environment. If you look at the graph for the past five years, we have been a leader and we have exceeded the state average in college and career readiness. This is the indicator for the Next Generation Accountability Index. The dramatic spike that you see in our score in 2018 resulted from the combining of the two high schools and adopting a new schedule where students take eight full credits each year. This innovation not only enabled us to score higher on the metric, but most importantly, allowed students to explore various interests. This is important not only for preparation for post-secondary goals, but also for engaging students in the moment. With more students being able to take high-interest courses, kids are more likely to be engaged and connected in school. And by improving student engagement and school connectedness, there is the ability to impact other indicators, like the on-track-to-graduation rate, and ultimately, more successful outcomes for students. A small note on this metric. The metric is scored by measuring whether a student takes two or more AP or dual enrollment courses. And studies have shown that this metric has a strong correlation with student success in college. It is important to note that with all the budget cuts last year, we had to put study halls back in the schedule. And while students report many positives of having a study hall, the typical student will now only take full, seven full credits each year, and this will likely impact the number and variety of courses that students can take, impacting this indicator. On the next slide, we have an image showing how EHS was recognized as a leader in Connecticut in career readiness in 2022. The Connecticut State Department of Education published an article highlighting EPS for the ways we expanded career readiness opportunities. Here you can see a screenshot of a Zoom call where Assistant Superintendent Middleton and Longy and Director of Operations John Digg participated in a showcase where other high schools in the state learned from Enfield on how to expand college and career readiness opportunities for their students. We also hosted a visitor, we also hosted a visit from the governor, who wanted to learn about this indicator and what we were doing. Along these lines, the Career Center was recognized as one of the top programs of its kind in the state. Articles were written about its staff, its successes, and the several schools from around the state visited our school to learn more about our Career Center. While we still offer great opportunities for students, the programming we lost with the reductions last year will likely impact not only our accountability index, but most importantly, college and career exploration for students.
So as part of this presentation, we wanted to help to give more detail on some of the programming that unfortunately was lost over the last year. So on the slide that you're seeing, there were 50 courses at EHS which did not run for this year. There were a few of these courses that did not run last year, and I'll get into a little bit more of that in a moment. But if you're taking a quick look at the list of courses, you can see that this really impacted the entire school and went across departments. So it wasn't one particular department that took a bigger hit than another. But on top of that, you can also see that the different levels of courses that we offer, so whether it's college preparatory, the regular level, or up at the honors level, and then at the highest, the AP slash ECE level, those dual enrollment courses, all three types of courses took an impact with courses that we lost this year. One of the questions that you might be wondering is how were decisions made about which courses to cut or which courses to not run? A lot of it depended on staffing, certifications of staff who were still going to be remaining at the building, and then partly also around student interest and number of requests for each course. So there were a few different factors that we had to take into consideration with which courses we decided to run and which ones we had to cut. Going back to that previous point that I was mentioning before, so 11 out of the 50 did not run last year, again, partly due to staffing certifications requests. But 39 out of the 50 that you see on the screen here were not offered this year due to changes in our level of resources. So out of the, out of the 50 courses, we did want to highlight this list of AP courses that are not running for this year. And Ms. Clark had gotten into it a moment ago. We're very fortunate to have a lot of dual enrollment course offerings at EHS. So for this year, we currently have 17 AP courses and we have eight UConn ECE courses. These are courses that can earn students college credits while they're taking the courses at Enfield High. So one of our goals is to try and, you know, turn over every rock, see how many courses we can get that are dual enrollment, credit-bearing courses, so that our students have an advantage to try and either A, save money on tuition costs by earning college credits early and then transferring them in to wherever they end up attending college. And B, we also want to try and help our students to put together competitive course loads so that when they're applying to colleges against peers from really around the world, that they have transcripts that are academically competitive in comparison to their peers who are also applying to those schools, to try and put them at a competitive advantage or at least put them on a level playing field. An added note going into, related to this AP section here, just to give you an idea of the type of impact that we're kind of bracing for and looking at right now. So last year, we had 474 AP exams that were taken by our students. This year, we have 311 AP exams that have been ordered that our students have signed up to take. So that's a reduction, or that's a decrease of about a third, 34% fewer AP exams that we're expecting to administer for this year. So that just helps to show we're trying to take advantage and maximize all the resources that we have. Unfortunately, we did have several courses that got cut. So we are expecting to see a decrease in our numbers of students taking AP exams. I'm going to split this slide in half and help explain a few things. So definitely not trying to be all doom and gloom. We are fortunate that we have multiple, multiple programs and the partnerships that are still in place. I am going to explain two, two of these four that are not in place for this year that had gotten cut. So I'll explain those first and I'll switch gears. So on the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see the College Connections Program and the EMT Program. I'll start with the EMT Program. So S-NUTUCC had a professor or instructor who came over to EHS for the last several years, and we offered an EMT I course and an EMT II course with the goal of helping students position themselves to take an EMT certification exam to be future EMTs. Unfortunately, that was one of the programs that is not being offered for this year. The other one that's on the right-hand side of the screen is the College Connections Program. So that program, we had students go and attend courses at S-NUTUCC during the daytime schedule. And those were for specific programs around hands-on areas. So manufacturing, electromechanical, and welding. We had several students who partook in those courses, really enjoyed them. Unfortunately, those are not courses that we were able to offer for this year. But I'm going to come back to that point in a moment. On the left-hand side of the screen, there are two additional programs here. The High School Partnership Program, I'll finish with that one, and then the College Career Pathways Program, also referred to as CCP. So the CCP Program, we have three courses that we have an articulation agreement with through CT State. And we have three courses that are offered at Enfield High. Those are Honors Algebra II, Child Development Lab, and also Graphic Design and Production II. Those are three courses offered at Enfield High where our students can earn college credits for those. Those are available to students in grades 10, 11, and 12. They're completely free. Students don't have to pay anything for those. And John Digg is hoping to get another, a fourth articulation agreement in place for Digital Photography II. So that just depends on paperwork with, with CT State and them approving that for high schools around the state. So like I said, we're trying to maximize opportunities with the staff that we have and build in as many dual enrollment courses as possible. The fourth program that's on this slide that I'm finishing with is the High School Partnership Program. That one is a little bit different, so that's through CT State again. And it's available to students in grades 11 and 12. It's also free. But students who have a cumulative unweighted GPA of a B or better, so it's a 3.0 on a four-point scale, they are eligible to take courses over at S-NUTUCC, but it has to be outside of the school hours. So it's typically afternoon or evening program courses. And transportation is not provided, so students have to find, be able to get there and back. In order to try and beef up this program or have more students get involved with it, we had staff from S-NUTUCC, including their admissions director Roland Atkinson, come over to our school in January, put on a short presentation for students who were interested. And we've got a dozen students who are taking courses at S-NUTUCC in the evening this semester. A really neat perk with this program is that you can be taking courses, CT State is all under one umbrella now since they've merged. So you can technically take a 1,000th level introductory level course. It can be something that's either hybrid or totally remote. So you can be taking a course from one of the other dozen CT State campuses, but you can do it from the luxury of your house here in Enfield. So we're trying to promote this program, but we notify all the students who are eligible for it as well. So trying to highlight things within our program of studies a little bit more, these are five areas that we want to just pinpoint and, and explain that these are popular pathways. Unfortunately, we lost courses in each of these areas for this year. But these areas, computer programming, engineering, Intro to Auto, teen leadership, and there's a combination of different science selectives. These are areas where we, where we took a hit. But we just wanted to highlight that these are very, these are popular areas that our students demonstrated a high level of engagement in. So I don't think it comes as any surprise, we're living in a very technological age. So at the moment, we have no computer programming or computer science courses at Enfield High, which is something that we would really love to build back and put in place. When it comes to engineering, we had a combination of different engineering courses. But again, it was dependent on staffing. So we're, we're down to, I believe we have one engineering course for this year, an introductory engineering course. But national infrastructure is always going to be an important issue. And I'm sure you, every year you drive around, you see work being done on bridges, construction all over the place. So there's going to be a continued real demand for, you know, manual labor or construction or engineering, those types of areas. That kind of ties into Intro to Auto. It's been an extraordinarily popular course for the last several years. We do still have the automotive program, but we lost that particular course, which was a feeder course into automotives I and II. So that's another key class that would be fantastic to have. And then two more areas here, teen leadership. This is a fantastic course. Students really enjoyed it. It had to do a lot with presentation skills, public speaking skills, resume writing, helping students to be student leaders. So a lot of social attributes that contribute to being successful students. And then the bottom category here with science selectives. While we did add some classes like medical terminology, unfortunately, we lost some other courses, including marine biology and forensics. Those had been very popular courses over the last several years.
Getting back to knowing our strengths, we know that Enfield can be successful in the area of offering a great program of studies. We've done it. It's been something we've been commended as a leader for. So we also recognize it might take us some time to get back to where we were. So we understand this is a multi-year process. We're going to, we are going to continue to do everything we can do at the school level to maximize our current staffing resources and get creative. But we want to talk a bit about the need for restoring staffing levels. So in particular, key programming, you mentioned the AI advances and our need to keep up with the times. Adding a math teacher to our current staffing resources would allow us to add in some computer programming offerings back into our program of studies and address large class sizes and address the need to add the personal finance graduation requirement. And we'd also like to look in the future, maybe not this year, but down the road as more funding becomes available, do a better job recruiting and retaining educators in Enfield in the areas of technology education, world language, special education. These are all hard to fill positions right now.
And then just continuing with our roadmap, kind of looking into the future and the things that we're hoping to try and restore and put back in place if possible. I mentioned the College Connections Program before. Unfortunately, that's not running this year, but we have heard that CT State is trying to explore different ways to possibly restructure that program and work with, work with towns to see if it's something that could be, you know, put in place again. So, so that's being explored, and hopefully that's something that can be put back in place in the future. And then another part here with the Career Center, I know this has been mentioned a couple of times between Erin and I. I don't know if people totally understand all the different types of roles and tasks that the Career Center staff had addressed and participated in. So just to name a few, they invited in several guest speakers throughout the year, held career panels, organized field trips, coordinated ASVAB testing for students who are interested in the military, and that's a couple of times a year. That we're actually still doing, but we've absorbed that through our guidance office. But they also helped with the College Connections Program and trying to facilitate students in their attendance to go and participate and go over to S-NUTUCC for those. So those are just to name a few. Those, there are a lot of other tasks that the Career Center had orchestrated throughout the year. So we would love to get back to offering those programs. But like I said, we're trying to explore all of our possibilities when it comes to dual enrollment programs. We're still trying to add in different articulation agreements where we can find them. Again, it depends on our current staffing and the certifications that our staff have. Sometimes it's a little bit easier to put in place an AP course in comparison to like a UConn ECE course. Those can be a little bit more complicated to set up. But we're trying to explore our channels through CT State, through UConn, and with the AP program to hopefully keep offering our students as many opportunities as possible so they can piece together really strong friendships and look as competitive as they can compared to peers when they're applying to post-secondary programs. So it, yeah. So we just wanted to add, on the school website, we have a digital version of the program of studies. It had been in PDF format for many years, but we have, it's got to make a makeover. So now it's a fully digital version. It's using an airtable that John Digg helped put together. So it's a whole lot easier to look up individual course information and do a search or use different filters. So that's linked under the Parents and Students section on the EHS website. And hopefully, people are exploring that and taking advantage of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions, comments? Ms. Pickett?
No, me. So I'm going to plug right into that program of studies. Thank you for this presentation. I hope there's another evening that we could do a quick overview. I know we do like an official program of study night for like eighth graders rising to ninth graders, but I think it is impressive, the work that's gone into that kind of digital platform. And I would say, as even a young parent or like an aunt to a new high schooler, understanding pathways, understanding ECE, understanding why it's important for your students to enroll and how that can be a cost savings later, or how they can be used, is sometimes can be overwhelming. So I think it's a great way to just demonstrate the hard work and the offerings. I have a few comments and questions. Some of them I'm going to like, I'm going to ask my direct questions first if that might be helpful. One is the slide on our data on students' access to courses. That's really helpful. I think that's something as a board we need to be paying a close attention to. Like what, what does that data look like moving forward and the true impact of what's happened? My wonder to you, and you might not, you probably don't know this answer off the top of your head, but something I'd be interested in is to know the disaggregated data. Who are the students who are taking advantage of those courses? Are we reaching our students of free and reduced lunch? Are multilingual learners having access to those courses? Gender, race, all of those things, just to look at, you know, truly what learners are being impacted by our offerings. And that goes to some of my comments about the, the program that was lost, College Connections and our EMT versus the CCP courses. I don't want this to be like CCP courses aren't good. They are. But when I think of, when you listed what those course offerings are, those are nice additional courses that students can transfer into a college and get credit for them and take them while they're in high school. While our EMT programming and College Connections really offered like career pathways, kids got a certificate and could go be an EMT after high school. And so thinking about the impact of the programming that we lost and the true outcomes that it provides for students, I think we also have to be mindful of that, of how we are rebuilding and not just trying to score higher on an indicator, but truly looking at the impact that it has on our students and their long-term life successes. The HSPP, the Taking Courses After School Outside of School Hours, I think is a nice option, but there's an access issue there, just the reality of not having it built into the programming. So I will share, I'm a little bit frustrated because I know we've talked about this in Curriculum Subcommittee about what has been the impact of the courses. I've directly asked when courses have come up for like, oh, we don't need this in the program of studies anymore, or we're going to make this adjustment. I'm like, is this from the budget cuts or is this just a? So this was helpful to clearly see the impact, so thank you. I think we need to have more of these honest, transparent conversations about, I mean, 39 out of 50 courses not being offered, a 33% reduction in our AP exams. Data matters. So I've heard from town councilors like, oh, show us the data that shows that it was helping. Well, our data showed that we were, we like made dramatic increases in students' access, and the data is showing that the cuts are hurting. So I think it's important to highlight that and make those connections. So big things that I'm just going to keep harping on, everything we're going to talk about later tonight does not impact the schedule impact that has happened. So the detrimental impact of the, the schedule change at the high school is not solved in any of the discussion that we're having in the Career Center. So I think when we talk about the impact of the investments that we're making on universal student programming, I appreciate this. I'm sorry that you're in this situation, and I appreciate the information.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Ms. Black.
I wanted to say thank you, but what I really appreciate is your honesty tonight because there is no rainbows and roses, like it's not sunny. There was a devastating loss to the high school. I think the fact that we were championed for the career readiness and everything the Career Center did, and now that's gone and we can't offer it. And students like Izzy have said, you know, the students want Career Center back. I think when you, if you have a student that's going to go to college, you're going to go to many admission tours, and you're going to sit there and you're going to listen to the admissions of the college day. Your student needs rigor in their schedule. And there is no longer like those easy senior years, right? You guys know that now because you have to have senior rigor in your schedules. Like you can't take that senior year off. And it concerns me because I'm sure that there are kids that are highly disappointed that some of those classes are not available anymore. I mean, we do have a lot of kids that leave Enfield High to go on and study engineering. I also want to say that there are some degrees that even if you take an AP course and pass the exam, they, you still have to take that course, like nursing, I know that for an example. Like you can take AP Chem in high school and AP Bio, but then when you get to college, they're going to make you take their own, usually it's like a biochem. But taking those in high school helped you in college, even if you couldn't use it for a college credit. And I think that's important. I just think we need to have more brave conversations like that. Like when you guys were presenting about the Career Center, I'm like, it's gone, it's gone. But then you followed up and were able to show us exactly what is missing at the high school. And I think we need to have conversations surrounded about that, and we need your honesty surrounding that. I also, a loss to the Career Center that maybe people don't know, if your student doesn't know what they want to do, they're reaching out to your student and saying like, what are your interests? For a while, my son was interested in firefighting. And so they were trying to spark his interest in firefighting to see if there was, you know, something they could do to spark his interest, or kids that are interested in the military. It's really about a holistic approach to helping students, not just college-ready students, not just students that want to go into the workforce. And they worked really hard at helping all of our students. So unfortunately, like Amanda said, it's not in the progression of the budget discussion. But the losses at the high school- the budget discussion. But the losses at the high school were, I think, deeper than people either realized or wanted to realize. So I thank you for your honesty this evening.
Anybody else? Mr. Coover?
Thank you. So I'll be brief. Appreciate you guys coming in. I think it was a good overview of kind of like the differences from last year to this year. So I just had a couple of questions if you guys could just expand on. To Principal Clark, in your roadmap, you were talking about the example specifically of adding a math teacher and having effect in computer programming. Could you elaborate on that? Like, is that interchangeable? Or like, how would that?
Historically, our math teachers have taught the computer programming introductory course and the AP Computer Science Principles, which we offered previously, as well as another AP Computer Science course. So that is a math certification.
Okay. So if they held whatever that certification is, they could teach that without extra training?
So they sometimes do need to do some additional training, but you need the certification in math.
Okay. So would the plan be if we brought in another math teacher, they would probably still be teaching math, and then a current math teacher would shift over hypothetically?
There's a lot of options with that. Yeah, it could be shifted.
Okay. But it would be something like that rather than just, because I feel like if someone's going to school for math and they become a teacher, and then all of a sudden they're teaching computers. Like, it's similar, but I feel like it would be different.
Yeah, we have teachers who taught a variety of math and computer programming. So a teacher might pick up two sections of the computer programming.
Okay. Makes sense. Appreciate it. And then I just have another question, and this is to Mr. White. I know you were talking about, you know, we lost the Intro to Auto class, but we still have Automotive One and Two. So have you seen like, you don't just like quantify the, has there been a loss in Auto One or Two in enrollment? Or is it too soon to tell?
No, those classes are, they're full. So every semester for the last several years, those courses have been full. But Automotive One and Two are both full-year courses, and they're capped for, just because of safety reasons. So it's, it's either 16 or 18 students for each section, and they can't accommodate, we can't over-enroll those. So the Intro to Auto courses, we had, gosh, it was either two or, it was like two or three sections for each semester because the Intro to Auto courses, that was a half-credit, half-year course.
Okay.
So you're losing approximately 45 or 50 students getting exposure to Intro to Auto in freshman or sophomore year to go through the basics about automotive repair and safety standards before they could even jump into Automotive One as a full-year course. So that's just a lot of students who are missing out on that opportunity.
Okay. And was like, that intro, was that set up as a prereq? Or was it just like an optional that they could, like junior year, take the intro and then?
It was set up as a prereq to be able to get into Automotive One. But now there's not a prereq.
Yeah, now that's been taken out. So. Okay. No, that makes sense. Those are just two things I kind of wanted to clarify, just to understand it better. So thank you, guys.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Pickett. You spurred something that I was thinking about. So I just want to clarify your question about the computer science courses. So we had those courses, and then they were. So as I'm looking through my notes, I'm just going to say this is not something you need to respond to, but I think us as a board and as a district, just feeling levels of frustration when we will talk highly about our STEM and STEAM programming. We're investing a ton in that in our preschool, in extracurricular activities embedded in our elementary school scheduling, and then there's nothing at the high school for the students to do. And that is incredibly, incredibly frustrating. So.
Hey, Mia?
I just had a couple of questions, just to clarify. And definitely do not take this as I'm trying to minimize the fact that we lost a lot. But how many courses just overall do we offer at the high school? Like?
I would have to get that one out.
Okay. All right. But then I guess, being the parent of an eighth grader, and we just had to fill out like one of those Microsoft forms of like, what do you want to take for electives and stuff? I'm a little, I'm like torn, concerned. I'm not sure, because a lot of those things that you mentioned were on the list to pick from. And we had to like, pick like 10 choices, and then we got like a paper back from math class that you had to fill out and said if you wanted to take AP, I can't even remember what it was now. But like, so are we filling those out in anticipation or for not? Or like, I'm like, what do we do now?
We opted to include all possibilities in the scheduling process for a few reasons. One, to have data on where there is interest, and two, not knowing what would be funded by the budget and who we'll have for teachers that have certain certifications. We first have to see our staffing.
Gotcha. So you're just preparing for everything?
Right.
Yeah, because depending on staffing that we have and the certifications that they possess, that might, that might dictate or impact our flexibility that we have to either put back in a course like, you know, Forensics or Marine Biology, and then maybe not offer a section of Intro to Physical Science. So it just depends on staffing that we have. So we wanted to include those. I recognize that that could maybe, maybe feel a little bit misleading with selecting the courses for, like if you're an eighth grader going up to ninth grade. But that's also part of the reason why we want students selecting additional alternative credits, just so that if one of those courses does not end up being offered, it gives something else for us counselors to work with as far as putting the schedule together.
Gotcha. Okay. And then with the Career Center, are there other ways? Like, are there grants out there that work on just like college or Career Center things that we have explored to maybe see if there's like some funding for at least something for that? I mean, I know you guys did a great job this year with, you know, doing the Career Day, which was good, but you know, obviously it's not the Career Center.
And that was the one teacher who was formerly their career counselor that put on that Career Day with some help from other colleagues. So I think it comes down to manpower, and we just have seen our manpower cut dramatically. So.
Okay. All right. Thanks, guys. Anybody else? All right. Oh, go ahead, Dean.
On the list, it wasn't just automotive that was cut. I saw some other non-standard go-to-college paths that were cut. Is there any drive to get those back, to keep those kids involved too?
There's so much we'd like to restore. We've had to prioritize what we think is feasible this year. But yes, we, in future years, would love to get back some of our science courses, our world language courses we lost. Even social studies class sizes are really high, so there's a number of areas where we could restore programming.
Izzy, I saw you.
Oh, yeah. On the Career Center thing that you were talking about, I just wanted to point out that our Career Center before did so much for our students. I was just talking to Ms. Clark about how much that helped even me. I was able to go through a nine-month program through UConn where I was able to get a scholarship, and nothing can replace the work that the ladies did for the Career Center. And without the funding and the budget, our students aren't able to get the scholarships that we need or the ability to even do a lot of our STEM programs that, again, a lot of the time aren't offered now because of the budget cuts. And I just wanted people to be aware of that, that our Career Center does so much more than I feel like people realize and gives students such a boost, especially students that maybe they aren't even thinking about going into like a college kind of higher education career path. There, the Career Center gives them kind of an opportunity to look at different avenues of what they want to do and kind of boosts kids up that aren't at such a level, like their parents are like, oh, maybe you might want to do college. There are students that don't have that at home, and the Career Center was a support system for those. And I just wanted to mention that because those people that worked at the Career Center made a huge impact.
Thanks, Izzy. All right. Anybody else? Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to add on to what Izzy said. Honestly, the Career Center was probably one of the biggest losses that I experienced. And we talk about all the big things that they did, like they set up Career Day, they got these guest speakers in, but we don't talk about the little things. For example, they took the time to pull down every single student and felt, they asked them what their interests were, write down some things, and then based off that, they would send you personal invites to their Career Centers that they would get for you and a group of kids who also had the same interests. When I was applying for my, for the HOBE Award, I went down to them and they helped me write out my resume because I'd never done something like that before. And I've just heard a lot of feedback from students that that is something that they are also very disappointed about.
So then that means that our guidance counselors are trying to pick up the slack for that? That's what we're doing?
Yeah. So we have, I'll answer for that part. We've got six counselors up at the high school. Each of them has about 250 stu-, well, just under 250 students on their caseloads. They do individual meetings with students each year, and a lot of it is geared towards planning and preparation for life after high school. But having the career counselors was definitely a nice, our offices are right next to each other. So it was really complimentary and collaborative with the way that we were able to work together. So we would have, you know, counselors are working on a lot of individual student situations, putting out fires, attending to student needs, corresponding with families back and forth. I don't think it comes as any surprise. There's been an uptick over the last several years with mental health needs that students are experiencing. So a lot of the work that counselors are doing is triaging issues that are being encountered on a daily basis. But like right now, in the middle of the year, we're in full swing with the course scheduling process for the following year. And that's a two-month process, just meeting with students to go over reviewing courses that they completed, trying to track graduation progress, credits that still need to be completed for requirements. So yes, we're trying to pick up the slack, but it's also hard to replace staff members who have been lost. So I'm trying to pick up some of the activities that the Career Center ran, such as orchestrating the ASVAB test a couple of times a year, working on a North Central Act of Kindness program that they had, that they had been running for the last several years. But like Izzy and Liv said, it's hard to replace some of those other smaller things that they did on a daily basis, such as inviting students down for career panels and helping students explore career interests through different inventories that they would do. So I would love to be able to say yes to the counselors are doing as much as they can, and they are. But I think it's just quantifiably impossible for the counselors to pick up all the slack that the career counselors were doing.
All right, Mr. Ryder?
No, I just wanted to say, as far as the Career Center is concerned, that it wasn't just about college prep and readiness, that they also had racks and racks of donated clothing. Like, they would let students come and like, put on a suit and pretend to be interviewed for a job role. Like, it was, it was more than just the guests they invited and the fact that we were invited once a year to meet with classes. This is a huge detriment not to have the Career Center in our high school. And the two staff members that ran that were absolutely incredible. And that's one of the things that I want more than anything to come back. But I just want to thank them both for doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Go ahead, Ms. Pickett.
I just want to clarify, it's going to be part of our budget discussion, but that's six school counselors and two social workers?
No, we have three and a half social workers.
Three and a half social workers.
Izzy?
You should have an updated staffing report for your FTE report. I know it's small, but.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. And going off of what you said, our, like, I can talk firsthand that our guidance counselors, I feel like they're kind of being overworked. Like, I can't imagine like how many times I email my guidance counselor for in-person stuff, and I can't imagine that by like 50. I ask her stuff every single day for, for like schools and stuff. She must be so swamped with work, and that much puts so much stress on our guidance counselors that they can't possibly think of the things that our Career Center had. Like, our Career Center and our behavior techs, so shout out to Coach Mo from last year. They even made an HBCU fair last year, which I thought was super helpful and super impactful. And we're just not able to do that because we don't have the Career Center and plus our guidance counselors are just, they have too much to do. There is not enough time in the day, and they're dealing with too many students that they're not able to fully grasp the both, that's two jobs, two, that's two, one too many jobs.
Thanks, Izzy. All right, anybody else? Well, thank you for coming, and your presentation is much appreciated. All right. Mr. Mackey?
Start with the super, first portion for the superintendent's report, Student Representatives.
Okay. Our bit's pretty quick today. I want to say a big congratulations to our 2025 Valley Ditorian, Katia Diaz, and Salutatorian, Jonathan Arudo. We also have our yearbook final deadlines, which is going to be tomorrow. So that's the very last day we're sending out our forms. So make sure that you have your yearbook, or else you're not getting them. We also have our Blues and Beyond Assembly. It was supposed to be scheduled for last week, but it got rescheduled for the 28th, just because the group that was starting it, they got sick. It's going around. So it's going to be the 28th during fourth period. And then we also have some spring conferences coming up. March 12th and 13th is going to be our spring conferences. So make sure if you want to be there to just sign up. And we also have on March 12th, a 2028 Class Fundraisers at DeAngelo's. So come on down if you want to support Class of 2028. And lastly, we have our GSA, which is our Gay-Straight Alliance group in our school. They're doing an in-class summit on March 25th. Basically, kind of like a civil discourse. They're just talking about certain things that could be improved in the school. It's going to be during third period. So if you have any kids that are in GSA or are in Black and Brown Student Union, I know some of those kids are going to be in there. That's going on, and we're probably going to bring some of our findings to Ms. Clark, and then I can talk about it next time.
This Thursday, there will be a blood drive at the high school for the American Red Cross. Students are eligible to donate if they are 17 or 16 with parent permission. So if you're interested in that, make sure to contact Mr. Barnes to sign up. Pro-Start Culinary will be having a competition on March 4th at Yarago Stadium, so good luck to them. I believe that's their last one before they go to Florida. Junior prom tickets will be on sale next week, $70 each. And if you are bringing someone that is outside the Enfield High junior class, you must have the permissions filled out with all the signatures while you're purchasing your tickets. For all freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, the course registration timeline is closing, kind of. So don't forget to do that on Power School Online and make an appointment with their guidance counselor. CIAC Arts Award have been awarded, they are usually awarded to two graduating seniors. This year, the Music Award goes to Eshan Patel, and the Visual Arts Award goes to Kyrie Post. So congrats to you guys. And Enfield High students participated in the UConn Science Promise Bowl competition this weekend. I, myself, being part of that. And we had a successful trip for it being our first time, and we won, there were two teams, and both teams won at least half of their games. So congrats to everyone participating in that.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, next up.
All right. Next item, you have, and there's handouts for anybody in the public that wants to have it. There was a request for some information related to the Open Choice Program. So I put together a little Q and A packet for you that I believe Mr. Longi has just passed around. I'm not going to go through the whole piece, and I'm not going to read the whole piece for you because you have it there for your reference. I tried to give the information based on sort of the background, how the program runs, how the students are chosen, how many kids we currently have. And then I think a big question has come up, and I would just say misinformation has come up related to funding and the overall expense. And just for clarification reasons, I've put on both the 23-24 as well as the 24-25 numbers. So we are in the process right now of determining how many seats I'll open up for next school year in terms of what grade levels those would be at and things like that. But you could sort of see the Open Choice Program, because of the numbers of students that we had, we had 102 students last year, overall was just under $1 million that was received through different grants, whether it be the academic and social support or the per pupil grant. And the per pupil grant, just so for an understanding, is they take the number of kids that you have that are, have been allocated seats, then they look at your enrollment based on your PSIS submission to the state. Depending on what that percentage comes out to be, you get a range of either 4,000, 6,000, 8,000. It depends on sort of where your percent breaks out to be. Then above and beyond that is where the academic and social support grants in the early beginnings. You get basically one and a half times the per pupil if they're in a, and I tried to put it here, where did I put it? Just above that chart, do participating districts receive additional funding for different age students? So you'll have additional funding that would be provided if they're going into sort of the early beginning appropriations. So if they're going into like the pre-kindergarten or the kindergarten age. I did not include in those charts an entirely separate grant that we receive. I did include it in that bottom paragraph though, because it is very closely related to that program, and it's also run through CREC. That's the CREC Magnet Schools Assistance Program. That's a five-year grant. This year, fiscal year '25, we have just shy of $275,000 allocated from that grant, and that is used solely for our pre-K STEAM Academy. And that is used solely for our pre-K STEAM Academy. So there are a variety of different funding sources that come in. And I'll say, if you do the math, you're going to notice that it's not going to come out exactly what a per pupil expenditure would be. However, we don't pay for transportation for any of these students. You have to back out the additional administrative costs that we already assume. There's a number of other items. You have to look at this program in terms, you can't compare it dollars, you have to look at it like enrollment. If we lose 20 kids across the district, that doesn't mean we lose a teacher. Those 20 kids are sped, are spread across 13, 14 grade levels. So the same sort of thing is happening here, you know, we're placing students in specific grade levels that we have openings for. For, I'm going to give you another for example. If I was to choose, I was not Mr. Longi last year, but I'm sure the conversation came up when he had to appropriate seats, fifth grade this year, over at Crandall, would not be a location that I would appropriate seats to. We're already at 30 kids. So that's off the table. So you have to look at all of that when you bring in, whether or not you're going to open up the seats and whether or not any of that's going to occur. But again, I provide this to you for some background and for some information. You'll see later, I didn't go into a whole detailed page on the district budget, because I think you have to look at this program separate from the budget. However, I did put in a couple of hyperlinks. If somebody wants to be listening in, if somebody's interested, the hyperlinks are in the budget materials, they're clearly labeled, you can't really miss them. I put a Q and A in there as well. So that's the update as requested. Can I answer any questions related to that? Amanda's got her finger up.
I have a couple of clarifying questions. One is, I want to know where this ask came from, as far as the interest in knowing more about our Open Choice Program.
I asked for, in leadership, just to understand the program better, because there was a lot of misinformation going about on if we are spending money on kids that come from Hartford, or if Hartford funds them, and how that funds them. So I thought that it would be much better if it just came from the man behind the desk.
Perfect.
The other, just clarification funding wise, and I'll let you ask your next question, because I didn't mention it. Because the number one piece will say, we're spending all of these extra dollars. Any additional funding that we require to educate children that are part of the Open Choice Program, we bill back to Hartford, and they fully reimburse us. So, for example, if we have an outplacement, that's not on your bill, that goes to Hartford. If we have to pay for a one-on-one paraprofessional, that's not on your bill, that goes to Hartford. So again, I apologize, I meant to mention that in the funding, it is mentioned in the Q and A as part of the budget presentation.
I was going to highlight, that's the next point that I was going to make, is, I guess, I'm just going to say this, I'm concerned that there's interest in specific types of programs, especially programs that we've historically been supporting and have been, like, we want to talk about Open Choice as a two-way benefit. Our pre-K STEAM program and our early beginnings preschool programming is made possible because of these dollars. And it provides opportunities for Enfield students that we wouldn't have available to us if Open Choice students didn't come to Enfield. So it is a two-way beneficial program. It's not just about taking kids from Hartford and giving them what we can. They also provide a ton of wealth of resources and supports to us. It is also the only student that we get 100% of special ed reimbursement for. The only student in Enfield that we get 100% of student, special ed reimbursement for. So I think it's really important to talk clearly about who the students are, what they bring to our district, and the true financial support that does come with them. They are not accosted into our district.
Yeah, and I think it's important to know, like, even I was having a hard time finding all of the information in one easy-to-find place of how things, you know, are funded and where they come in, and does it pay for this, or does it pay for that? It's definitely not an easy thing to locate, so I just thought it was a good idea to try to, you know, dispel any rumors. If we had it all in one spot, one-stop shop, show me where to find it, and, you know, then I can, then we know, you know, what the deal is with that. Yes, let's go over.
So, thank you, Madam Chair, I think this is definitely informative, and, you know, I'll admit, my knowledge in this is pretty rudimentary. So this is kind of like a basic question, I noticed it says we have, you know, like last year we had 102 pupils, this year we had 101. So is it, you can't go down, and it's every year you're looking at just increasing seats? Just to, I guess, confirm that? Or is there a fluctuation that's possible with this program?
No, per, per state statute, per program statute, as soon as you open up the seat to the child, they become part of your district. So their SACID now gets connected to, their SACID, their student information number that the state uses to track everybody about everything, they become part of Enfield. So the only way you would reduce numbers is as they graduate out, or as they move out of Hartford, or as they decide to go off to a different program.
Okay, so the individual students then, they would, they would stay in the program, and then each year, the superintendent, you have discretion, like you said, to open up X number of seats based on projections and space and stuff like that. But you, we could open up zero seats to whatever number we felt was appropriate.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Understanding of that? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, they actually send, Mr. Macio and myself, actually, a spreadsheet of where they currently are, and then they ask you, do you want to do this? Do you want to do this much? Do you want to do this much? They give you all these options on there. It tells you how many are graduating, and how many are in, and how many are moving up.
And you have to cross-reference it, because there are, they base everything off of the October 1 enrollment, the, the enrollment report like I give you folks. Well, it's now going to be March 1, and a lot of changes have occurred between then and now. So their numbers are based solely on what we report out. So we have to provide updates, this person is no longer with us, this person went where, blah, 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 blah. And then we also allocate what additional seats we would want to give.
I think it's important to note that typically, Enfield has been a heavy investment in pre-K K seats. We want to bring kids in in the younger grades, and give them the opportunity of being students here K through 12, and get them early so we can support them early and provide good outcomes. But typically, other open seats are also for siblings, so many families, a kid gets, like, you win the magic lottery of getting to bring your kindergartner or a pre-K student to preschool, and then the family might say to the superintendent, hey, I've got a fourth grader, and they open a seat. So I think it's really intentionally done of how we open seats. It's not just like playing a game of how much numbers can we get, and like, where do we put kids? And I also think there is support that's, that comes from the state for them.
Anybody else?
If there's other questions?
Oh. So just the last thing, did you say this was going to be posted online, just for the public to see it? Or do we have a?
Yes. When we go into the budget presentation, I'll show you where the link is.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
All right, UPS update?
Okay, a couple of other things, obviously, the majority of our time has been spent in revising and updating and revising and updating the budget. However, outside of those times, we're also monitoring a lot of the executive orders that are being sent out, in terms of what, if any, impact they will have on the school district. I am delighted to say that the State Department of Education has reported out that there has been no lag in their ability to receive reimbursement related to nutrition programming and title funding and things of that nature. So they have been receiving what they have been supposed to be receiving. The winter assessment data at the elementary and intermediate level has been completed and has been analyzed. The last few days, we've been spending sitting with Michelle Middleton, as well as the directors and the principals of those buildings regarding those results. And I will say that, you know, we went in fully anticipating what we were going to see. And then we were surprised, because we had some unbelievably positive results in some very difficult-sized classes. So that's a, that's an unbelievable testament to the teachers, that they sort of figured it out in terms of all of that. That does not mean that that is the way it needs to stay. So I would just remind everybody, I think as you've seen in the budgets of the past, in tonight's budget, help is on the way. But I do want to give kudos to those grade-level teachers that as they see their results, they, they just absolutely knocked it out of the park. You know, they were so well that they're talking about folks at one school going over to visit other schools, because they wanted to see, what is it that you're doing that I could do? And it's the sharing of information, which is nice to see happening. So that has been happening. Student Advisory took part in the high school student advisory with Izzy today, about 10 to 15 students took part, and I will say, I always love going to the advisory, and they left. Oh, well, Ms. Clark and I sit there, and it's wonderful to listen to, you want honesty? Go to the high school student advisory. They will tell you honestly what they believe about teaching and learning in the classrooms. They will tell you what they truly believe about what's good, what's bad, and what they would change, much like our ladies have done here tonight in advocacy for certain areas. They also brought up today some information related to, obviously, the Eagle Block, the study hall impact, as well as, now, I know you have not had this in a number of years, but we've talked about JFK Middle, JFK Middle School extra or late buses, but any, what if any possible impact that could have for them. So it was nice to have that information come directly from the kids. Unfortunately, if you watch NBC Connecticut, you'll probably see my ugly mug on it. They did a story on Save Our Sports, and spoke to myself, Sarah Brown at the middle school, one of the coaches at the middle school, as well as some other folks that are intimately involved with that, so that is out there for everybody. And lastly, if you're on the pre-refereendum committee, you're going to hear a lot about this probably tomorrow, but we have spent the vast majority of our time, our free time, all of Mr. Daig's time, dealing with roof leaks everywhere, literally everywhere. The worst of it seems to be over at Stowe. You may hear out in the community that we've had to displace one of our pre-K classrooms, take a classroom of 17, split it up and put it into two classrooms of 18, so now we have pre-K class of, you know, 25 and 26 kids. That will not remain forever. We are actively investigating what we could do differently, so that we can provide them a more appropriate space. There are also two other rooms over at Stowe that are leaking to a significant level of concern. There's leaks at Crandall, it's ruining the gym floor. There's leaks at Parkman. Part of it is the time of the year, so all of the roofs are leaking. I say, Enfield Street was looking pretty good today when I was walking around there. No leaks in that building. Alcorn leaking.
It's like underwater.
We can provide you a small boat to get across that moat. You know, it's just all of the buildings. You had a roof referendum for a reason. I don't know if we're going to be able to keep up with the amount of leaks that are happening, but, you know, you're going to hear things about classrooms being displaced. Because I, I can't, in good faith, put kids and teachers and staff into rooms that are just pouring out water. I think that's enough for me, because we're going to talk long enough with the budget. Any questions related to that?
All good. All right, so next up is audiences. Okay, so you could just come up, you get four minutes, and just say your name and your relation to the district. So we're going to go for Amy Guzzi. Guzzi, Guzzi, I'm sorry.
All right, before I get started, I just want to say, I did email all the board members earlier today. I'm going to talk about a lot of numbers. I know listening to a lot of numbers is hard to process, so I did send you all an email attachment of this data. And then there was one small error I made, I sent a correction to that as well. All right, Amy Guzzi, Suffield resident and Parkman School teacher. This is my 22nd year teaching, all of those years have been in Enfield, and I can say that without a doubt, this is the most difficult year of my career ever. And teachers are coming out now to speak about the budget, because the budget needs are important. We need more teachers and support staff in order to properly educate our students. This year is challenging, to say the least, to manage with what we've been given. Teachers are overworked, overwhelmed, overtired, and overextended, because our classrooms are overcrowded. Something needs to be done about lowering class sizes and fully staffing in buildings, especially at the elementary level. I can only speak to what I experienced personally, and I can tell you, Parkman School is already understaffed and will continue to be if changes are not made. One of our third-grade classrooms is supposed to have a full-time paraprofessional for student support. All year, this position has been filled by two halftime academic tutors, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. Tutors were intended to be providing student support in all classrooms, so when tutors are being used in this para role, classrooms are missing out on this extra assistance. For most of the year, we've had only one building sub instead of two, so then the tutors are also being pulled to be substitute teachers as well. When the para tutors get pulled to sub, now the special education students they are assigned to work with miss out on the supports they need to be successful in the classroom. Because of this lack of staffing, coverage is piecemeal together every morning by our office secretary. Occasionally, a gen ed classroom might have two, or three, or even four different adults in one day covering for the absent teacher. I'm sure you can imagine how much quality education is happening on those days, when a new adult is showing up every hour and a half to be the new teacher. Those are just the vacancies at Parkman that I know about, since I work there, but I can imagine other schools would have similar situations. I know we've been working on the budget and adjusting and adding a few more teachers, and it's helpful, but it's not enough. 30 kids per class might go down to 24, but at the elementary level, 24 is still not sustainable. Parents, Board of Ed members, town council members, and the general public need to realize that while 24 sounds like a better number than 30, 24 is still a heavy load for any teacher to have. If all we did was plan and teach, we could say this job was easy perhaps. However, there are so many other things teachers do on a daily basis, that we would be here all night to list those things. Every student we have in our classrooms is not just another body to teach, but another child with educational, emotional, and behavioral needs that must be met. This year, I do have 24 students in my class. I'm also the classroom teacher for two additional students from the ASD class. Out of these 26 students, 10 of them have IEPs or 504 plans. That's 38% of my students who require accommodations. And luckily, I do have a full-time para to support my students. Another third-grade class we have is, also has a total of 24 regular ed students, seven of whom have an IEP or 504. That teacher is also responsible for three inclusion students from the ASD program. That's 20, that's 10 out of 27 students, or 37% of the classroom who have accommodations. This teacher has no adult support, except for an occasional time, a tutor might not be subbing and is able to pop into her classroom. Our fifth-grade classes are even bigger, so the larger the class, the larger the percentage of students who need support. One of our fifth-grade teachers has 12 students with IEPs or 504s plus two inclusion students. That's 14 out of 29, or 48%. This classroom has a tutor acting as a para for only half of each day. Besides these staggering percentages, there are also classrooms that have a small percentage of students needing accommodations. And how is that equitable for the teachers who have more needy students than other teachers? And more importantly, how is that equitable to our most needy students when we overload them into one or two classrooms, because we don't have enough staff to assist them? Right, was that my timer? Oh, it went a lot faster when I read it in my head. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Okay, next is Kelsey McGuire Bruce. This thing is crazy.
Okay, Kelsey McGuire Bruce, 63 Neelands Road. Good evening, everyone. I want to begin by expressing my sincere thanks to all of you for your decision to revisit the superintendent's detailed budget presentation during a budget workshop last week. I understand that this required extra time and effort, especially from our central office staff, and I, along with my colleagues, deeply appreciate your commitment to ensuring that every aspect of the budget was carefully considered. As we enter tonight's budget discussion, my hope is that we see a number that truly reflects the supports necessary to ensure that Enfield Public Schools can get back to making the improvements we were making. I am not naive enough to believe that rebuilding will happen in just one year. Unfortunately, we lost so much, and we know it will take time to rebuild. However, I don't believe that just the 11 staff members was enough to see the light at the end of this year's dark tunnel. Class sizes are, of course, a major concern, and reducing those numbers by adding necessary staff is essential. We heard tonight that 39 classes at the high school, along with the well of Career Center, was also cut. We also need to prioritize our support roles. Interventionist, behavior techs, and other support staff are absolutely crucial if we are going to even begin addressing the challenges of this year and beyond. Without them, we risk falling short in providing the kind of education and safety for our students that they truly deserve. Lastly, I want to echo the sentiments of several board members from our last meeting. When you make decisions, you represent all of us. You are not only here to advocate for the needs of teachers, but more importantly, for the needs of our students. These students are the future of this town, and they depend on us to make decisions that ensure their success. ensure their success. I urge you tonight to approve a budget that is both reasonable for our town people to support and effective in ensuring the success of our district. Please make a choice tonight that allows you to feel confident in knowing you are truly supporting the children of our community. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bob Crisati. I reside at 1320 Enfield Street. Before I start my spiel here this evening, my hat's off to the two student representatives for giving your insight and input as to what's going on at the high school, and I think it's very valuable that everybody that's listening here tonight, what you had expressed in regard to what you feel should be going on at the high school. I think Ms. Principal Clark and Dave White did an excellent job in telling us, you know, what is really going on at EHS. This was very eye-opening even to myself, who I'm very close with, you know, all of the programs that go on in the high school, but to hear that seven AP courses are not offered, 33% of AP exams are down, to hear 39 courses not being run at Enfield High School. Now, that's just at the high school. Look at the middle school, look at the elementary schools. But I'm not going to go off a tangent. I said I'm going to just stick to what I'm going to state here tonight. I am before you tonight to advocate for the students, teachers, all support staff, and administrators of the Enfield Public Schools. I have watched, and I've read, and I listened to the budget presentations by Superintendent Macchio. In the initial budget presentation, it was stated that our school administrators requested 92 positions to be restored in the schools. This is of the 127 eliminated from last year. These 92 positions were needed, not wanted, to offer a quality education to the students at Enfield Public Schools. Yet Superintendent Macchio only asked for 11 positions to be restored. And looking at what order positions should be restored following a request by the BOE, the superintendent submitted tiers of staff restorations. The last tier was to restore 33 positions. This still leaves a difference of approximately 60 positions not being restored. In the explanation of the tiers, rationales were given for these positions, and that's greatly appreciated. And I would have liked to see the rationale for not restoring the other 60 staff to the schools, enabling Enfield Schools to be whole once again. And I will emphasize "to be whole." At last week's town council meeting, you were all disrespected by the mayor, as he stated the BOE was an embarrassment. I don't know his reasons for saying this, but I do know that he was out of line and did not express the opinion of the entire council. Enfield Schools have lost many outstanding staff to other towns that will pay what they deserve for the years of experience, as well as support programs in their school systems. Positions for teachers and support staff cannot be filled here in town because there are not any applicants who would want to come to Enfield to work. That's pretty sad. Those cuts were devastating. I am also concerned about the mental health of our students, as I have witnessed this problem even in my own classes, mental health. There are many calls to the Enfield Police Department and to our EMS for assistance with students. This should be concerning to everybody. We can do better for our children. Restore education, please stop the Band-Aids. Your responsibility, the Board of Ed and the Central Office Cabinet, as educational experts, is to put forward a budget that gives our students what they deserve and need, and be an advocate for all students and staff. Thank you very much.
Moving on to board member comments. Who would like to go first?
I have a lot to say about the budget tonight, so I'm going to split my comments between our budget discussion and, but we had some really good things come out of Enfield Schools. We had exciting news, especially out of Enfield High. Enfield Eagles Wrestling competed in the C I A C Class Double L Divisional Wrestling meets on Saturday, and we had five wrestlers place. So we had Ethan Bonaducci, he actually placed first in his 126-pound division. Jacob Beeler placed second at 190 pounds. Braden Rothbun came in fifth at 150 pounds. Aries Bork placed sixth at 113, and Marlon Andino placed sixth at 132 pounds. Enfield compiled 105 points, and they tied for seventh among the 26 teams which scored the state's largest wrestling division. So they're doing very well. Congratulations to Kendall Coffey and Alyssa Hoseg on making all-conference for Enfield High Girls Basketball. I also went and watched the seventh-grade boys' basketball team take on Ellington again. It was another win for Enfield. Boys from both teams played great, including really good sportsmanship. I also have on here, and I added it this evening, Izzy and Olivia, thank you so much for speaking up during our meetings. I know you probably don't see it this way, but it really is brave to share your student voice in this room, and your student voice is extremely important to many of us. I can only say so much as the experience that my kids had, like you had said, you know, if you have kids that don't know what they want to do, and that was my youngest, right? And so it was really, the postcard came home, and he had the meeting, it was great. So everything you said was, you know, encompassing all the work, and I really appreciate your input during the meeting. I'm going to say this about the budget, and then I'll say what else I wanted to say during our budget discussion, but I'm just a little bit, I shouldn't say a little bit, I'm disappointed with the central office and cabinets approached to the budget. The Board of Ed is not the taxing authority. Our job is to advocate for the needs of the district. The council decides the financials. The Board of Ed needs to advocate and market what is needed, what is right, and the why. We should ask for whatever percent is needed, if that's what we need. The council can cut it down. Asking for a higher budget is not being irresponsible, it's simply giving an accurate representation of what is needed in our schools. So that's how I feel about that, and I will get into more of what I have to say surrounding the budget during that discussion. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. LeBong. Anybody else? Go ahead, Ms. Pickett.
Just a couple of comments. I will also keep my budget comments to that discussion. One is Friday slash Saturday Ramadan begins, so I think it's important for us to be mindful of that for staff and students. It is a month dedicated to spiritual rejuvenation and devotion, so I think we could all benefit maybe for some of those learnings, and I encourage us to actually explore and learn more. I'm going to piggyback a little bit on what Mr. Crisati ended his comments with, but I think it's really important that the language that we use in public decorum matters. I think there was going to be a potential thing around profanity for our charter, but I think there is harm done by actions and words that are spoken, but I want to be clear that harm does not equal victims. I want to remind us that there are real consequences of misinformation and hateful speech. Ignorance breeds hate, and the ignorance on display nationally and locally is creating unsafe environments for the people that reside in our community. I want to ensure that I clarify a few things, that hanging a Black Lives Matter flag does not mean that you hate the police. That Black Lives Matter stands for accountability. It stands for implicit bias training, something that I think we could all benefit from. But most importantly, and I quote from their mission, that Black Lives Matter is working inside and outside of the system to heal the past, reimagine the present, and invest in the future of Black lives through policy change, investments in the communities, and commitment to arts and culture. If that offends you, then I think that says a lot about you. Next, personally, calling out school staff by name, on the mic, and our teachers' union is unacceptable and something that I will not stand for. I believe it breaks our own town charter decorum rules. Rules apply to everybody. I know it's hard to believe, but that a ceremonial mayor is not above the rules. Our behavior models to students what we believe to be acceptable, so I encourage us to be role models and not exceptions to the rules that we expect our own students to follow.
There you go, Ms. Pickett. Anybody else? Mr. Cover?
All right. Thank you, Benham Chair. So I just want to say thank you to Mrs. LeBong for our shout-outs on recent Enfield sports accomplishments. I think it's good, like we talk about, to highlight some of the good things that we're doing. I also do just want to quickly recognize the people of the public that came to participate in the audience portion of our meetings. I know it's not easy, and a lot of times, you know, throughout the year, there's usually nobody sitting in the audience, so when things come up, it's nice to see at least people come out and get interested in discourse and communicating with us. Just to follow up, I know the superintendent's sending us weekly updates, and one of the important things was the Power School data breaches. So there is a supplemental letter, it looks like it's forthcoming, and there will be communication to staff and individuals that had individual records that may have been breached. So they will get specific communications, and then there'll be another community letter, if I'm understanding that correctly. So I will reserve the rest of my comments for specific agenda items as they come up. Of course, the budget's probably a big thing, and we do have a couple policies and a contract to approve tonight, so keep us moving. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Can I jump in and clarify?
Yeah.
Am I allowed to?
Go for it.
Okay. Power School sent out the notification to all of the folks that were, where the breach did get into. There'll be more specific communication coming out from Dr. Wiley. It won't be a whole piece, it'll be targeted to very individual folks related to more specific information. We continue to work with our cybersecurity legal team.
Okay. And then I just wanted to thank Mount Carmel for donating the use of their hall for the First Reader's Annual Trivia Night. It was a great night, even though we only had half of the people that usually show up. So, we're going to make it work, we always do. But definitely thanks to everybody who did come out, everybody who played speed rounds, we had a great time with the emcee, Terry LaCoste, he was great. So, we look forward to seeing everybody next year. It's always the last Saturday in February. Thanks again to Mount Carmel.
Okay. Moving on to number 10, unfinished business, discussion and action regarding the '25-'26 budget.
All right, let me move. You got it? Oh. Okay. So you were provided for your budget books. Can I live? You were provided for your budget books, basically updated summary sheets, variance summaries, object breakdowns, the FTE report, basically all the paper that you received before, you received additional copies. You also received this presentation and a two-slide piece. For those in the public, I want to say there's two handouts over here. First handout is three, excuse me, three. All of the tiers that were discussed last Wednesday, because I don't think any of you were there, so you'll have all the information that was done then. And then the other handout is basically two gatherings of information, one green, one pink, and that was sort of the end result of that topic. So the second budget history sheet with only the two areas will be what we're actually going to go through. I will say, as we go through, much like I did last time, I'll give you the changes that are in the budget presentation, and there were a number of them. Because as you know, following that last meeting, there was a number of additions that were made to the budget. So, I do want to thank, unfortunately, the high school girls who have just left, and I want to thank the high school presentation tonight because it's the open, honest, transparent communication that we're trying to continue to provide, and, you know, somewhere, we're going to get somewhere in the middle here, is my lucky guess, it would be my guess, and every person that I bring in front of you, I absolutely know that we can come up with a variety of topics and items and staffing and whatnot that we would love to have placed back into the overall budget. For those that weren't here, and for those that are listening in, because this was not a videoed piece last Wednesday, when the cabinet came back together, just in terms of process, we were asked to re-review the entire budget. We looked at what positions we could add back into the budget. We had a very long list that was placed back in. I know there was a comment earlier about the 33.9 that we ended with, but there was many more than that that were there. We prioritized, I asked them to first give a priority of high, medium, or low, then we looked at sort of where those numbers would come in at, and we quickly realized that we were only going to be able to tackle the highest of the priorities. Those sort of top priority, if you will, and again, this was based off of the administrative submission of their budgets. This wasn't arbitrary to us. So, I know credit recovery, or not credit recovery, career counseling keeps coming up, you know, when that was presented to us, it was in a lower priority level from the high school. So please understand that it wasn't us ignoring their priorities, we were honoring their priorities. So those top priority items were then asked to be broken up into four tiers. Those four tiers, 1, 2, 3, 4, are what I showed you the other evening, and that's what I provide to you folks in the audience, so you could see how the four tiers broke out. So that's just sort of process that we went through. That's a whole bunch of background. As we go through the budget, obviously, I'm not changing mission and equity statement and things of that nature. The accomplishments remain the same as they were in the past. The priorities, we're not changing priorities. We discussed, these are our priorities. Class sizes, and I've mentioned this in every staff meeting I attended, that class sizes were going to be the top priority. While they remain the same, I just tried to maybe change the way it was, there was a lot of wording in the class size section, so I put it into bulleted formats versus the paragraph, just sort of spread it out a little bit in that way, but nothing else really changed within that section. Budget assumptions stayed exactly the same. The good news is I've been able to clarify and confirm some of our budget assumptions that we will be able to maintain the 58% cost maximum per the state statute for the VoAAG and the Magnet School. I know that was a question we were a little bit of a worry, but that appears to be locked in at that point. Excess cost, I'll let you know what the governor comes out with, whether or not he ends up, or whether or not it passes the Senate, and then whether or not he decides that he wants to veto the additional money going into excess cost. But, you know, we're going into it, planning for where we are, there was no adjustments made to that. We can skip right all the way ahead to the overall recommendation. So the recommendation you have in front of you was after two and a half hours on that Wednesday evening, and it comes out to be 5.57%. Not to confuse those of you in the audience, you're not going to find a 5.57% anywhere on those pieces of paper, but you are going to find a whole lot of estimate, 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 because until we plug in the actual dollars out of the contract for what we anticipated being, they're estimates. And actually, they're still estimates, because you've got to go out and hire the people. But, the 5.61 is the one you will find on there, and I believe that is tier 1, 2, and 3. So those three tiers were incorporated into the budget. 5.61, when it was calculated into the budget with actual dollars from the contract and all the different contracts, as well as the benefit package, came out to be 5.57%. You should note, and we'll go into this, well, we'll go into it as we get into the different areas. The frequently asked questions page, I mentioned to you during my superintendent's update related to the Open Choice Program. I added the third question down, what financial impact does the Hartford Open Choice Program have on the overall budget? And then you have the Q and A document is linked right into that answer. So I gave you the numbers for both fiscal year '24, as well as fiscal year '25, and then the Q and A document will break it. If you would like to also have that as a separate item on our website, I can put it separate as well to make it even more accessible, but that information is in there. The rest of the information has just been updated, just to make sure that we are as accurate as possible related to the number of staff members, grant funding supporting 85.95 of them. I know, I think it was Charlotte mentioned, is there a possibility for grants and whatnot for things such as, like the Career Center? We're utilizing every grant we possibly can. You know, 85.95 of our 854.65 FTE are funded through grants. So, I mean, we are utilizing the grants wherever we can. Budget drivers, just if you want, no change in terms of numbers. 1 through 10, stayed 1 through 10. The only thing that was updated here are the percentages. We are now almost at 83% if you look at salary and benefits. So the other, you know, 17.3% is the rest of the budget. 82.7% is the overall for salary and benefits. Top 10 drivers, those equate to, you know, almost, you know, a little over 97% of your budget. You know, the other 200 and something account lines, you hear me say it every, every meeting, the other 200 and something account lines come up to, you know, 2.74%. So there's really no need to go further into that area. Student enrollment is the exact same enrollment. This is what we reported to the state in October. The FTE report has been updated, just to make sure that our numbers are jiving with everything. And then we're going to get into the first priority. So this has been updated. So what is different on this page that was not on the other pages? This is where probably that tier sheet for you folks would be very helpful, because you can just follow it down. It will also be where the budget history sheet will also be helpful, because you're going to see it all. It just doesn't mirror out, it's a little combined on that sheet. So you have the grade 2 teacher at Hazerville, two grade 4 teachers at Prudence Crandall. So last time, we only had one grade 4 teacher over at Prudence Crandall. This is a second teacher. So that springs your '25 average down to, I want to say, 21. And there's additional slides that I've added in here that you'll be able to see class sizes when you compare from this year to next year. Grade 5 classroom teacher, two of them at Parkman, or one at Parkman and one at Prudence Crandall. The grade 6 science teacher was previously in there. The integrated pre-K teacher was previously in there. The two kindergarten teachers were previously in there. And I think you heard this evening on the overall impact of that teen leadership course. And going back, and I know, you know, I believe Andy would agree with me, back in the days of us being principals at the high school, him in Enfield and myself in Suffield, that teen leadership course is always incredibly popular. Great course for the kids to be able to have. But we combined this PE teacher also with Eagle Academy, because the Eagle Academy kids right now don't truly have a PE teacher to be able to give them that. So this would allow for, you know, a couple of sections for them to be able to teach throughout the week, where they'd be able to take the Eagle Academy kids to the gym and actually be able to have a true PE class. So there is a combined effort there. Class sizes, probably a little tough to see out in the audience, but the highlighted areas are the areas that are, everything has been increased. So you have the far left, the current school year. The middle is the initial budget that was presented, and that was the one that had 16.4 faculty and staff. Remember, again, my mistake, there was a miscalculation, the 11-point whatever was actually the 16.4. So the additional staffing has been added on the far right, and so you notice there in terms of Memorial, Barnard, and Crandall. So that adds in all of the other pieces. So those are what your class sizes would be like. And again, those take you all the way through tier 3. So you have class sizes that, you know, range from 20 to 25. We have the kindergarten, we really sort of emphasize that they were going to be 20 or below. And I think the other item just to mention here is obviously enrollments come and enrollments go. So these are the number of staff that would be within those buildings, and there may be a need to shift depending on if something drastic happens within those buildings. But this is your estimated average class size, because you can't get .8 of a student, .5 of a student. So, you know, it would obviously split them up. But this does represent 33.9 new staff, tier 1 through tier 3. Priority 2, actually, since our last meeting, I received one of the nicest emails I've ever received, and I think I gave you snippets of it in the last weekly update, and I just wanted to make sure I could capture a portion of that. And within the email, and I promised, I called the mother, and I said, is there any way I can use a portion of this? I will do everything I can to make sure that your name isn't in it and you're not sort of identified specifically. But within that, she talked about the thankfulness she has that the program has behavioral technicians, and because they truly are so crucial to helping the special needs children when they're struggling to regulate their emotions. And again, this was just a parent of a student in one of our specialized programs. I'm not telling you which one, and I'm not telling you where. So just one of the people that reached out. I will say separately, and as you saw in your weekly update, we, we don't run Teacher of the Year this way, but this woman actually wanted to nominate her child's teacher for Teacher of the Year, because they were doing that well. They had a rough beginning of the year, and now the child's just taking off. So kudos to her for taking the time to recognize and appreciate the staff. In priority 2, social workers remains the same. Special education teacher for educational counseling program at Prudence Crandall, that stays the same. The specialized instructional assistant position remains the same. That's a part-time position. And then we look at an additional SOAR classroom at the high school and additional SOAR classroom at JFK. That is new. Now, that additional SOAR classroom would be comprised of a special education teacher and two behavior techs. So that would be included as part of that. The other item, and I want to say this might have been in tier 3, but I don't have that paper out, is the additional behavior technicians for the DLP classrooms at Barnard. So those are the changes. Number 4 and number 5 would be the changes that would be associated with priority 2. Priority 3, student and staff support. We have a number of additional changes here. A speech and language pathologist assistant over at Stowe. As you know, we have a number of students over at the pre-K program that require speech services. Those SLPs are, rather than asking for an additional SLP, they're asking for an assistant who would be able to provide support and assistance to some of the kiddos. An additional school nurse, now, not a full-time school nurse, but a 19.75 hours per week over at Crandall. And then lastly, there are actually three math interventionists included as, as part of this budget proposal. Two of those math interventionists are at JFK. So we currently have one. That one math interventionist at JFK services 1,000 kids. Obviously, they don't service all 1,000, but they have to spread themselves to those that need it out of the 1,000. So this would be able to bring up to three math interventionists, one per grade level, if you will. And then there'd be an additional math interventionist at the K5 level. Again, today, we, today was the intermediate data that we were reviewing. Yesterday was the elementary data that we were reviewing, and part of that conversation and discussion is about how we are allocating those interventionists across the district K5, what schools they would be placed to, and sort of the identification of the kids versus just you get X number of interventionists at Y number of schools. It's sort of the criteria that we would be utilizing. So in priority 3, you have number 5 through number 7 are new.
The additional T cell.
Oh, thank you very much, Andy. Number 2 is the teacher of English of speakers of other language. We had one in the budget previously. This would be an additional. So this is two total that we'd be looking to add, and this would bring you back up to the number that you had previously. Priority 4, no changes. We have done nothing different with this area. The JFK late bus runs remain in there. It still says pending contract negotiations. Obviously, we're going to get into that in a little bit when we meet separately in executive session. Grants and revenues, no need to update that. Those are the grants and revenues that we already had. And then for the key takeaway section, the, I added the far right, I changed that check mark. So I put two hyperlinks there. The top hyperlink would be the budget history document, which would show where we were at before and all of the changes that we made to get the 5.57. The other document, because not everybody could attend last Wednesday, is last Wednesday's tier breakdown. So if you want to truly see all of the need that was requested, if you want to see over 6% of need that was requested, look at that breakdown. I will caution you that the 6 point, I think it's 0.8%, is actually 6.88%, because we built in $650,000 of prepay. So really, the ask that was proposed last Wednesday is 6.88% that we were buying down by prepaying out of fiscal year '25 and removing items from the budget for next year. So that's how we got to the 6.08. Of those four tiers, again, consensus seemed to be we'd be at, including the three tiers. So that's where the 5.57 came in. But you do have the information there. Again, I want to make it accessible to everybody. If you want to know what we were talking about, there's your information. It's all there for you. And then the last piece is obviously questions that I can answer for the members of the public, for staff, whoever it happens to be. Don't hesitate to call. Send me an email. I'm happy to answer questions. We have a Q&amp;A document for the board. I've answered every question that is on that document. We actually have some additional information that I'll add to the document today that Lorena Cisneros was able, the business manager, was able to gather related to behavior technicians in comparison of rates. So as that information comes in, we'll add that on there. But, you know, eventually, what I will likely do when this is all said and done, when we get to that point, is I'll put a link into this, these materials that'll bring you to the Q&amp;A document, so everybody can know all of the in-depth questions that were asked and hopefully the answers that were placed there. Questions I can answer related to where we stand as of today. The only, the only piece I just want to add in, the 5.57, remember, it includes the $650,000 of prepurchase.
Yeah.
So that means that going into next year, we don't, we don't have a lot of one-time purchases. Like, the Board of Ed doesn't go out and buy a truck, usually. And hopefully, we don't have to get into that business. So many of the items that we have in there, I tried to target items that we are hopeful will be decreasing over time. So I think we've done very well with our transportation contract. I think you're going to be very happy with it. As we get into doing the runs ourselves, there's a potential we can reduce the number of runs. So that could be a number that could potentially go down. So that's an item that I'm sort of thinking in my mind we would use as a prepay, because I might not need to make it all up. If I start buying papers, or paper, and I start buying pencils, and I start paying for staff, every person that I pay for now, out of this year's for next year, I got to build back into the budget.
Yeah.
That, that is the old proverbial fiscal cliff.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to figure out how to get you to not have so much of that. So just, that is included right now. We've got it down to 650. The last item I would say, and this is a reminder for everybody, it's only February I say it every meeting, this budget will remain fluid. We're still going through contract negotiations with the copier system. We're still looking at if additional savings can be made as part of insurance. We're still potentially may have retirements that come in. You know, it is going to change as we move on from here, probably two, three, five times. So that's just, this is where we stand now. I think it would be part of my goal to try to continue to add and reinvest savings that we receive, but also reduce your fiscal cliff for the following year. Questions I can answer related to the materials. I forget anything.
Go ahead. Will you want to start discussion, Dr. Callen?
That's what I was hoping.
Sure.
I had some prepared remarks that I decided to save for this particular, so I really don't have any questions, just some comments, if I may. So I just wanted to take a minute to thank the teachers and actually all of the school personnel for their patience as we continue our budget negotiations. They've put up with a lot of, a lot over the last couple of years, last year, actually. And frankly, I feel they have been overworked and underpaid. Because they are true professionals, I have confidence that they will continue to be patient as we struggle with the financial challenges facing our town. But their patience won't last forever. I think one of the mistakes we made this year, and last, was that as members of the Board of Education, we never really went out of our way to listen to what the teachers and other school employees had to tell us with regard to what they need and what their students need. Now, we heard a lot from teachers at this meeting, at the last, but we really didn't proactively go out and ask them what their needs are, what the schools' needs are. And I think that was a big mistake, because we were just operating, starting with numbers rather than with school needs. It's sort of like, it's sort of like diagnosing a problem without first talking to the patient. After all, the teachers are right there on the front lines, dealing on a day-to-day basis with all of the challenges that come with an underfunded school system. They know that we are in a state of crisis, but in the process of developing a budget, we never thought to ask them for their input. Over the past few days, I belatedly asked, and I got an earful. For example, one teacher told me that since the number of children in her classroom has exploded, so has the number of dysregulated students. It's a wonder she can get any teaching done at all. At a minimum, she needs the support of a behavioral health tech, which he doesn't have. The caseload of one elementary school counselor is now 32% more since the draconian cuts were put in place last year, which resulted in the overcrowding of our school classes, of our classes. The number of this counselor's PPTs and 504 meetings has skyrocketed, and social workers now have to split their time between schools to accommodate as many students as possible. The teachers won't be ecstatic about it, but my sense is, after having a number of discussions with them, that they could live with a budget increase of around 5.6%, which would allow for the hiring of 34 new people, mostly teachers, with the expectation that we would continue to address the manpower shortage at the time of next year's budget negotiations. We should remember that our school system finds itself in a seller's market, and eventually, many of our teachers may look to other communities that would be happy to offer them more lucrative positions and more teacher-friendly working conditions. Let's not take our teachers for granted. I will not be voting for this budget if it does not provide for a approximately 5.6% increase, allowing for the hiring of at least 34 new school personnel, primarily teachers. The voters will remember what each of us does here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Callen. We'd like to go. Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm going to shoot with a question, just probably save some commentary for stuff as we go down the road. So through the chair to the superintendent, the most current budget version, can you just explain the line, because I was trying to thumb through and I couldn't find it? You know, the background being last year when we had the shortfall, we got extra money from the town, we signed an MOU, and it's approximately that 1.7 over the five or six years. So in the current version of the budget, how much are we, how much of that is being reflected in this current proposal for payback?
So the way we were going to tackle the MOU, I just want to make sure I get the numbers here, so I get it accurate.
Yeah, while you're checking, I believe off the top of my head, it was approximately 1.7 million that we promised to pay back to town, and it was a five-year period.
The MOU agreement was 1, 1,701,408. However, since that time, we received some returns from retiree and COBRA, sort of returns back to us. So it was a check that was returned from the system. Rather than deposit it, I made the decision to have However, since that time, we received some returns from retiree and COBRA, sort of returns back to us. So it was a check that was returned from the system. Rather than deposit it, I made the decision to have our business manager basically take that off of the MOU that we owed. So we actually owed $1,663,633. In order to bring that number down, you were supposed to start payment, you were supposed to start payment next year. In order to bring that payment, right, next year. In order to bring that payment down, we were going to pay $277,272 out of fiscal year '25. That would let you start paying next year, 277,272. That's what was in your budget. I removed that from the budget and utilized it as one of those items that you would have as that prepayment. So in the budget is really zero because we're paying for it out of, the original plan was to pay for it out of fiscal year '25. You were going to have one payment to bring the overall per year down, and the second payment was going to be for fiscal year '26.
Okay, so just to make sure I'm understanding it, so the budget, it's showing zero because of the prepayment. It's two years' worth of that 272 out of the 650 prepayment.
Correct.
Okay. And that ties in what you were saying, because your goal is to use non-recurring expenses pulling out of that prepay?
Trying to.
Okay. All right, that's the only question I got at this point. I'm sure I'll have some more as we go on.
Scott, you still got your hand up, or?
Yep.
Go for it.
Yeah, so with regard to the budget, I just wanted to read an email that I sent to Dr. Callen, who was not able to join us last week as he was ill. And that's the only reason I'm not there in person this evening is because I'm fighting the flu as well. But this kind of summarizes how I feel about the budget and where we are. So, Dr. Callen, I hope you're feeling okay, better, at least not worse. Tonight, we had a great discussion. We landed around 5.6% increase as a group, as the superintendent clarified a few minutes ago, that's 5.57. But in my email, I did say around 5.6, and I put that quote. However, this number will be less once we hear back on a few items regarding transportation contracts still underway and unknown insurance costs. Tonight's discussion did get us to the following consensus, which has me optimistic. In addition to the 11.9 adult human people added, not all, but mostly teachers, to Steve's previously proposed budget, tonight's discussion could net as approximately triple that number to 33.9 adult human people in our buildings. Again, not all are teachers, but most are. Some are additional support staff, but we can all agree, more adult humans we have in our buildings, the better. To see what rolls, we are circling towards adding. Please see the attachments that we got tonight from the superintendent. Tier one would be adding approximately six staffers to that original 11.9. Tier two would be adding another additional 4.5 staffers, and tier three would add an additional approximately seven staffers. Again, Dr. Callen, we know this isn't perfect, and our needs are greater in various other places throughout the district than what this will solve, but at least we were pleased tonight that at the very least, we're looking to increase the previous ask. I was very optimistic because we had definite consensus in the room. We had what seemed like more than the five yeses we would need, if not six, and I see it as a win over getting less. So I just wanted to thank Superintendent Macchio. I tried to follow along on the screen with tonight's changes, and I thanked Tina. She said she'd grab me any papers that we were handed tonight, so I had those. So again, tier one includes a SOAR, Special Education Teacher for SOAR at both JFK and the high school, as well as a behavior tech for SOAR for JFK and the high school, kindergarten teacher at Barnard, kindergarten teacher at Memorial, as Mr. Macchio went over. Tier two was, again, four and a half people, part-time school nurse, speech and language pathologist, math interventionist at JFK, as well as one for math interventionist at K-5. Again, Dr. Callen, just so you're aware, there's only one math interventionist for all of our junior high, not even one per grade level, but this would get us back to that, and a fourth-grade teacher at Crandall. And then we got as far as a consensus regarding tier three, which would add more behavior techs at JFK and EHS, as well as a district-wide T-Saw teachers. And then, as Superintendent Macchio said, a PE/ team leadership teacher at Eagle. As we know, Eagle doesn't even have PE. I mean, they have PE, but not a specific PE teacher. They don't have a gym in their building. They're able to utilize the high school when they can, but this would increase those opportunities for them, as well as a DLP teacher at Barnard and another math interventionist at JFK. So basically, in my summary to Dr. Callen, a teammate of ours who wasn't able to make it, that's how I feel about it. I'm so glad that we were able to reach a consensus on that, and I'm hopeful that that's where we land this evening. So thank you very much, and again, pardon my sound. I'm doing the best I can. Thanks.
Next? Would you like to go, Mrs. Pickett?
No worries. Steve, can you just clarify for me? And I'm sorry, I'm flipping through the pages will just make me lose my mind. How many math interventionists do we have in our elementary school buildings, and how many reading interventionists do we have? Sorry if you don't know off the top of your head. It's okay.
I'm going to have to flip through the pages.
No worries.
I can tell you that we have less math interventionists at the elementary level than we do reading.
Perfect.
I can get you the number. I'll try to thumb through. It's definitely in here.
No worries. I'll still make my point without the exact number. I appreciate that.
Oh, hold on. Do you have the rationale paper that I provided you? It's in there.
Thank you.
We added it in there.
In the rationale, interventionist, so increase support from 11 to 12 teachers across six different buildings. So that's two per building for math.
But I wouldn't call it two per building because it's
Because it's based on need. Thank you so much.
Correct. But we did put it in there.
Perfect. Thank you. So first, didn't mean to put you on the spot. Appreciate you remembering it's there, and I do have this information. And actually, I was going to add, that was one of my questions before I get into my comments, is this rationale sheet part of the links to the budget, like history and the tiers?
It's not, but it can absolutely be added as a link.
I think it would be very helpful just for transparency reasons, the thoughtfulness behind why we are ranking and tiering and how we're trying to rebuild, I think is really important for decision-making.
I can, what I'm thinking, what I've done in the past, is the budget history sheet shows you the numbers, but I can put a link right in there that justifies the people as well. And I can also, I can put it in multiple places, specifically like the priority one slide, the priority three slide, because that's where majority of them hit.
I'm not asking you to do more work. You did a lot of work for this, so just make sure it's linked somewhere. You deserve credit for it.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the way I would do it.
Perfect. So I'm going to just share some comments, and I'm going to be honest with all of you. I'm sitting here mostly as a mom. My two kiddos are in the buildings, are Enfield Public School students. My daughter is coming home, talking about having to clear her classroom on regular bases because of dysregulated students and unsafe behaviors in her classroom. No staff is being added to her school, so I think it's just really important that we have a honest, transparent conversation, that the budget ask of the 5.4, is not a greedy budget. It's barely what we need budget. For years, I have asked for a greedy budget. I will own some of my own blame, guilt, and shame that I've felt from the previous years that we held majority, that we should have done a huge increase even though we had COVID funds, because now we're sitting here struggling. I'll own that. But I've asked for it. I've asked, if you replay, I've always asked for a greedy budget. I agree, we need to understand what we need in order to be able to rebuild. I feel for you, Steve. You came in and like immediately had to clean up a mess and create a new process. My hope is that this is the first step in building a long-term strategic plan with a budget demonstrating how we're going to get there that we can support. It's necessary that we understand that the supports and resources that we had put in over the last three years, five years in particular, demonstrated that it was working. Our budget showed that. This budget is a conservative ask for our needed supports. The reality is we need more. I want to be clear with residents, staff, and families. If you want this long-term plan of prioritizing education, you better be ready to mobilize and vote. We need a long-term plan. We need people who are ready to invest. Which brings me to taxes. No one likes paying that bill. Taxes provide us a service. No one likes to pay that bill, but the services we benefit from. It is really important that we talk about education's goods and services are the people. You do the hard work each day. So yes, a huge chunk of our budget is people because they're our work. So the mayor has talked about education not finding cost savings, that we haven't presented any ways to cut our budgets or save money. I want to say that we've presented many ways to lower long-term costs and provide savings to taxpayers. Investments in tier one, so those interventionists that are being talked about, that's how we lower costs. We will be forever adding special ed services and programming that is the most high-cost service if we don't address our tier one needs. We will also be setting up a pipeline to feed our own students into those services. We will not be outsourcing. We will not be a regional hub. We will be filling those classrooms with our own kits. So we need more than one math interventionist at our middle school. Security. The council selected the most highest-cost security model with no investment in our basic physical security measures. We want to find a cost savings? I'm sure there's some there. We need a car to deliver our mail. And guess what, taxpayers? It's been a fight to get the town to give us one of our own cars that's sitting in a parking lot so we can deliver mail. So if we want to call us fiscally responsible, our leadership has tried to present long-term and initial cost savings. They've worked diligently to outline a budget that's transparent, that has demonstrated week after week where the adjustments have been made. They have shown the rationale for every ask they've made. So before we point fingers, a full story needs to be told. I also didn't even talk about our buildings that are falling apart. We talked about Stowe having to close a classroom. It's a disaster. I also want to make a comment because it's been talked about, we don't have the tax base, we don't have the money, we're not the Cadillac, we're not those other districts. I was in New Britain today, not a Cadillac. I didn't walk into one class with more than 20 students. That's New Britain. Interventionist, this might be a Cadillac comparison, South Windsor, six interventionist per elementary school building for math, six for reading. We are not asking for anything extreme here. We're asking to get some basic supports back so we can rebuild long-term. I will only support this minimal ask of 5.54. Thanks. Or more.
Any of us want to go? Okay, Ms. Blank?
So last Wednesday in our budget deliberations, I grew very frustrated in that room because I felt like there was a lean more towards what will the town council approve, more so than what is actually needed in our budget, and thoughts about, you know, well, we don't want to get people excited. And so I said a lot of things, and Amanda told me I should reiterate some of those for everyone who couldn't be there that night. So this is basically my synopsis. I said last Wednesday, as I sat in the room with the fellow Board of Ed members and cabinet members, I'm sitting around people who are the lead educators in our district, and they live in survival mode. I get that. Survival mode because of the town we live in, having lived through the attack on EPS through political ideologies like masks, pizza, social emotional learning, condemnation by the council saying funds were mismanaged, the Board of Ed is a disgrace. I get that each and every one of you don't want to happen to you what happened to me, will probably continue to happen to me, the harassment, the videos, the lies, the emails. I get why Enfield Public School leaders continue to live in survival mode, but I don't agree with it. It's your job to advocate the needs of Enfield Public Schools, a demographically diverse Enfield Public School system. Enfield Public Schools where over 200 kids speak 16 different languages. Enfield Public Schools where one in every four student has an IEP or a 504. Enfield Public Schools that need 45 Enfield High teachers to go back to the previous block scheduling with Eagle, Block, the Career Center, more class offerings and partnerships, as we saw here tonight. Enfield Public Schools that with proper supports increase their PSATs and content area in grades K through eight for 2022, 2023, and 2023 and 2024 school years. This is who you work for. This is who you advocate for, not the dictatorship that sits on the Enfield Town Council majority, not the Enfield Town Council majority who thinks that Enfield Public Schools hands out IEPs and 504s like candy. And if we really want to take a look at special ed, let's talk about special ed. Special ed has grown so diverse through the years, and there was a thought, somebody wise had said, like, you know, we really should look at the curriculum of special ed. So you have kids in special ed that, you know, have physical disabilities, and you have kids in special ed who have, that are on the ASD spectrum, and then you have kids that are in need of social emotional support, and then you have kids that have dyslexia and other types of like learning disabilities, right? And so their blatant disregard and the fact that they say that we hand out 504 and IEPs like candy is just simply wrong, and it shows their utter misunderstanding for what our kids are facing. And the emergence of what kids socially and emotionally need shows just how to touch they are with our demographic in this town. Okay. Whether you're a cabinet member, a building admin, a resident, or a taxpayer, Enfield either holds our teachers to an extremely high standard or diminishes their value. There's no in-between. But I said last week, Enfield Public School teachers hold themselves to that same high standard, not wanting to fail their students, or their families, getting devalued by the town council majority and Facebook keyboard warriors. But let's really think about this. I said, how do we as a town, as admin, a central office, so easily devalue our teachers when these teachers do so many extra things for our students? You guys lose sleep over our students. You guys sometimes feel like you're putting our students' needs before your own families. Let us talk about the teachers who nationally have died protecting their kids in their Yet here in Enfield, the town council majority and the town in general devalues our teachers' actual worth and the cost of education. There have been two years that teachers felt supported and heard in Enfield Public Schools in the 14 years I have sat up here. Teachers' jobs were affected the absolute most with the previous cuts, and every year, the teachers show up and do what they do to support the students the best way they can with less, and that's not the right answer. I also wanted to touch about, because this is a touchy subject, and I did bring it up, the majority likes to say, oh, we're bringing sports back, woo-hoo, we're bringing sports back. I have a lot to say about this, and I said it last week, and I'm going to share it. The fact that we had to have private citizens raise $100,000 is just a joke in itself, but I appreciate them doing that, and I see the value in having sports in our school. And I said this directly to Phil in that room, everybody talked about the detriment of not having sports, and the reality is, is that maybe out of 5,000 kids, 125 kids were impacted. At the middle school, to give you an example, out of 1,200 kids, 40 kids will play basketball. And in grades six, seven, and eight, they all play for a private team, whether it's Enfield Travel, Enfield Rec, baseball, they all play for another team. At the high school, the Enfield Girls JV soccer team played with 10 girls, and then the rest were on varsity. There wasn't enough to have freshman sports. That's the reality at the high school. Football took a whack. Football does have the need for freshman football. Now, I can be accused of saying this, like, my kids aren't there. Look, I'm a big sports family. My dad owned a sporting goods store in this town for many years. My kids played sports, they're D3 athletes. I'm not ashamed to admit that my middle son only went to school to play sports, the only reason he kept his grades up, and the only reason he went to college. There is a huge value on sports to miss those kids, and that value really sits at the high school because so many more kids have the opportunities in high school to play and don't play for private teams. And if you don't think that we don't understand the impact, I think you guys really don't understand the impact that when the football team has team dinners, we're sending extra dinner home with the players because those players ask privately if their family, if we have enough dinner to send home to their moms and their brothers, or sisters. So we understand the importance of sports around here, but we also don't want to compare it to special ed rooms or special ed spaces. And if you guys want to put a feather in your cap, that sports scout came back, well, you had no part in it because it was privately fundraised. you had no part in it because it was privately fundraised. All I'm going to say is I will not support a budget that is less than what we discussed last Wednesday, which is 5.6. I think it's modest. I also said, I'm not thinking that we need to give false hope. I think it's important that we show, we have to show the town of Enfield, this is what we need, what we need. And if the town council decides they don't want to pay for it, that's what they, but we have to say what we need. And if the town council is pulling out numbers saying they'll support this and they'll support that without even knowing what the needs are or asking what the needs are, it just shows, it just shows that they are not concerned what the needs are, that they are just concerned about the dollar. And lastly, Bob Crisati was right. People are leaving here. People don't want to come here. They saw the budget cuts. And I'm just saying that our teaching demographic does not match our demographic of our students. And comments from the mayor and the majority are not going to make it any easier for us to get teachers here that want to work here of color. So, I'm sticking with the 5.6 and I'm sure I'll have more to say as the discussion goes on.
Okay. Do you want to go? You want me to go?
The superintendent shall ensure the budget proposal includes the funding necessary to adequately support the educational needs of the school district and the efficient operation of the Enfield Public Schools. These words are taken directly from our updated policy 3110, Board Budget Procedures and Line Item Transfers that was recently passed by the Board of Education on January Funding includes the funding necessary to adequately support the educational needs of the school district. That's a huge and daunting task. And trying to balance it, balance that need with feasibility and sustainability, it's been incredible feat. So, we thank you, Mr. Macchio, for working tirelessly with your cabinet and with administrators to get to the point where we're at today. We appreciate the tremendous detail and rationale that you included in your presentation and the accompanying documents. In response to the board's request, thank you for creating the tiers outlining your priorities in hiring staff as we rebuild, enabling us to add more staff than your original request. We have each devoted several hours into this budget, not nearly as much as the superintendent and his staff. We've devoted several hours individually within our respective caucuses and then together as a board. There's no doubt that each one of us wants what is best for our staff and students. There's no doubt that each one of us would like to see every position that was eliminated last year included in this budget. But it is essential to pass a budget that would be feasible and sustainable. We do not want to relive the layoffs of last year because we chose to be too aggressive rather than realistic. The budget that Mr. Longi created, though difficult to implement in all its respects last year, has left us in a better position financially this year. We now have built up our 2% contingency and are able to begin rebuilding by adding many new staff. This proposed budget is the first step in the process of our rebuilding, and I do support it.
Thank you, Ms. Keschman. All right, you want me to, you want to go?
Well, I'll just, a question. So, on my previous point to you, Madam Chair, so my understanding was, I think, last week you guys had like a joint leadership meeting between board and council. And I don't know if it was one of the questions or one of the results of the meetings, maybe clarify is what, if anything, the board could do regarding the payoff to the town in that MOU? Is the town willing to rescind that, repeal that, or is that anything you can speak to?
Yeah, I'll talk about it in my comments. I can definitely. So, I'll just, I'll go now if you're done.
Yeah, that's all I got right now.
Okay. Okay. So, let me start off by saying, I thought we did a good job and worked together on Wednesday to come to a consensus, and I feel very strongly about the 5.54 that we got to. At that point in time, we worked with what we had for information. So, for transparency's sake, this is what's happened since. On Friday, at the monthly joint town Board of Ed Leadership Meeting, which was set up by the town manager and the superintendent to work on increasing communication with the board and the town, which actually has helped recently with issues like the pre-ref and the courier cars that were, that they wanted us to buy, but now we don't have to anymore, and our ongoing issues with maintenance. This time, it was the town manager, the mayor, the superintendent, this deputy superintendent, myself, Steve Belinda, and Mr. Santinella. At that meeting, the superintendent had provided an update to the town side as to where we were with the budget. At that point, the mayor indicated that he and his Republican caucus wanted to dissolve or get rid of the MOU, which is the Board of Ed owing the town a total of $1,701,407.88. He also gave the parameter of 4% for the budget at that meeting. Since that meeting, members of the town council have said to me that they would like to remove the MOU and also have said that they're also around the 4% mark. I have nicely slash not so nicely argued with the town council Republicans and advocated for the school system that 5.54 includes multiple supports needed for the system. I explained, I have a child in the fifth grade in one of the large classrooms, so I know these struggles are real. She comes home, she lets me know how it is. Her teacher and the assistant and the para that are in that room are doing a great job. It is just a lot of bodies for a class. It's going to be loud and chaotic, no matter how amazing that staff is, and they are. And it is very tough for kids to be in that setting, to the point of some of them not even wanting to go to school. I explained the need for supports due to additional protective custodies and interventionists to help our kids succeed. Obviously, we see in our weekly reports that teachers are resigning from the superintendent that sends them every week. I have brought with me this stack of emails and letters that I've gotten from parents and staff, mostly discussing class size, but also about music and special needs and prep times and IEPs. There's a lot of info in here, which I actually sat down and shared with the superintendent on the ones that he wasn't CC'd on. I called Tina today to make sure that she was aware of what had occurred in Friday's meeting since Mr. Santinella was there. Unfortunately, he only advised her about the MOU and not the 4%. However, I don't have any proof in my hand to show that any of this is going to happen, and I asked for that. The council seemed really eager to want to work through this, but without something tangible now regarding the MOU, and this budget is due right now before the next town council meeting, where they could vote on rescinding the MOU if they wanted to, I'm just at a loss. I don't have anything. With the info given at Friday's meeting, the five of us relooked at the numbers and we were going to propose something closer to the number that they had given at the meeting on Friday. But I'm not sure, do we waste the time on another unknown for some unknown result? And I'm not sure is for a realistic number now since I don't have the proof that, just a note even from the mayor that says that they are committed to rescinding the MOU. So, right now, as it stands, I have to go with the 5.54 and then we can work on it from there. You know, we know this whole thing is fluid. There are other variables that are not set in stone yet, like the insurance. We're going to get extra sped money from the item that's, are we going to get extra special education money from the item that's on the floor right now in the state? What does it look like when the budget gets frozen next month so the RANAC can close out all the POs and see how much money we have left? I'm sure that the budget today is not going to look the same by the time we have to present it to the council. If those work in our favor, that helps. I'm worried about federal funding or parts of it not coming at some point, and then what do we do? I worry that excess cost gets lowered further since it didn't pass last night to fund it at 100%, and the trend obviously keeps going down every year for us for excess costs. And now, we have this $40 million Band-Aid that the state wants to give if the Senate passes it tonight and then if the governor says okay and doesn't squash it. It doesn't do anything for next year's projection. That's just to give some bump for this year, so we can't obviously expect that in future We say it every year, the whole process is backwards. And it's like shooting fish in a barrel because you have us, the board, trying to get student needs covered. And then we're just at the mercy of the feds, the state, the town, just to get what we get. And then that's it. It's just, it's a maddening thing, and I just wish we could come up with some better way to make this work because this whole process has been intensely, intense and nerve-wracking. So, that's where I am.
Can I just clarify a lot of the comments?
Yeah.
Just for, in the love jingo, 5.57.
Isn't that what I said? Did I mess up?
There's a lot of 5.54s. And it's a lot of numbers. It's a lot of numbers, and it seems like every time the numbers go out there.
Yes.
But I just want to make sure.
Sorry.
5.57. Just, sorry. Just want to make sure we're clear. It's 5.57.
I was stuck on the $1.7 million MOU. Seven. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It is 15.57. Okay. My bad. Jean, you want to go?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I just want to say, I support the 5.57 budget with Chairwoman Riley and most of the board because of the added monies and the educational tiers that Superintendent Macchio has added, showing how we are trying to reinstate more teachers, like special ed teachers and classroom teachers, behavior techs, T-Sol teachers, math interventionists, and so on. These people are badly needed to make our district run smoothly, give our students what they need and deserve to be successful and productive learners. So, this is important that we do add as much as we can. The children are going to suffer if we do not have enough staff and resources. And you could see that from the presentation of Erin Clark, David White, all the teachers that spoke this evening, that if we don't have enough staff, course offerings, smaller classrooms, resources, that it's going to negatively affect our students in Enfield and their education. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Ms. Pickett, you okay?
Yes. Yawning. I just want to say thank you, Charlotte. I know that you're put in a very challenging position, and I know that it's got to be really hard to be in your spot. I'm frustrated a bit by that kind of update of the Friday meeting for kind of a few reasons. First, regardless if it's a Board of Ed budget or town budget, it's our money. It's town resident taxpayer dollars. So, when the whole MOU came about, I think it was very clear that was a stupid idea. Anyways, we're just paying back our own taxpayer money, but that was what they wanted. I think it's, I feel like this is like a trap and like a dangling of a carrot and like the quick-coke pro that happened with school security last year. There's no gifts. Giving us a car that we might need for mail is not giving us a car. We're a town. We all work together. We got a car sitting in an empty lot and we need it, we should give it. That's not a gift. That's not like, oh, take out the $200,000 you budgeted for a car and we'll give you a car. Like, no, that's what we need. Repairs to a school? We have our arrangement, custodial and buildings and grounds. That's what they do. So, I'm just going to say it is taxpayer dollars. We determine a need. There's not some arbitrary number that somebody ceremonial mayor decides that we then build a budget on. So, thank you for sticking with that. And the last-minute like conversations are very frustrating and I think undermines the intentional work of our cabinet and our leadership.
Anybody else want to go? No? Good.
Can I make a motion then?
Sure. I need a motion to approve the fiscal year 25, '26 budget at 5.57%.
So, moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Pickett, second by Ms. LeBlanc. Any further discussion on the motion, Mr. Cobre?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I think our superintendent did a good job of painting the background of the budget and talking about the budget history, and I'm glad that we have that transparency aspect. So, it's kind of going to roll me into my remarks for tonight. So, for the procedural background, according to our town charter and our policy and so forth, each year, the superintendent develops a budget proposal for the Board of Ed. Board of Ed then approves a budget that is sent to the council for appropriation. The final adopted appropriation becomes the board's general operating budget. Last year, when we heard the superintendent's proposed budget being presented, we heard it explained to as the district needs and existing policy supports this consideration. What the superintendent proposes is considered to be the needs of the district. We also heard tonight from our vice chair regarding that out of the still existing in our current policy, 3110. Moreover, this year, we have achieved a transparent budget document that the superintendent confirmed was prepared collaboratively with input from cabinet-level district administrators as well as vetted requests from school building principals. During the regular board meeting of January 28th, the superintendent publicly presented his proposed budget, covering his four budget priorities and a 5.33% increase over last year's appropriation. The next day, he subsequently alerted the full board via email of a calculation error and stated that his corrected proposed budget was actually 5.86%. During the subsequent regular board meeting of February 11th, the superintendent publicly represented his proposed budget and began explaining the error and that further adjustments had occurred in the preceding two weeks and that as of February 11th, his current proposal was for a 5.24% increase. At this point, prior to completing his remarks, members of the boards began interjecting with indications that rather than see a cost savings and a reduction of the overall percent, they would like to see a phased add-in of needs and more specifically, jobs. A consensus appeared to be recommending that the superintendent rework his recommended budget with various things worked back in. This is perhaps where we began to see a diversity of thought on the way ahead. If the superintendent's original budget was in fact a district need, then what do we consider this requested rework? Rather than actually tangibleize reductions in savings, add them items back in would now mean we are adding something other than needs. Whether or not we're calling them wants can be up to one's interpretation. Things that were reduced in the original proposal were being added back in. Sure, perhaps maybe we can call them projected needs. However, if they were immediate, why would they have not been in the original proposal that we had seen? I mentioned at the last meeting of the board that a school budget must harmoniously blend needs and resources. The superintendent mentioned his desire to come in using the phrase sweet spot and that we must be realistic what we approved. During this meeting, the superintendent had also began to present an indicated option to be considered by the board, which would meet district needs at a budgetary increase of last year at only over 3.9% over the current year appropriation. I highlight this because the superintendent's budget talks about a 4.4% covering contractual and mandated increase. However, due to efficiencies and streamlining in the budgetary process as well as potential utilization of prepaying, that 3.9% would still add the approximately 16.4 FTEs. During the board's budget workshop on February 19th, the superintendent again introduced further adjustments to his base proposed budget, which now came in at 4.9% increase over the current year's appropriation. During this meeting, as previously discussed, a consensus seemingly arose to add three tiers of additional line items encompassing various staff and support back into the requested budget and then with an appropriate increase in the ballpark of 5.6. This is the result that led to the current motion for it tonight. While this evaluation of adding more staff, measured by the acronym as FTE, or Full-Time Equivalent, is a noble effort to reverse the reductions of the last fiscal year, it strays out of the zone of feasibility and prudent behavior of our local needs and resources, the so-called sweet spot. We cannot bring back all of the staff and all the programs in one year alone. What we evaluated during this workshop as tiers of need may perhaps be more appropriately considered years of need, projected increases over a multi-year period. considered years of need, projected increases over a multi-year period. I feel comfortable saying that we all up here agree. Class sizes must be a priority. The superintendent appropriately considered this his number-one budget priority. When we look at bringing on personnel, we should constrain our primary short-term efforts to classroom teachers. While other educators and support are important pieces of the puzzle, they do not affect the gen ed class sizes. This board needs a budget that sets a foundation for predictability and long-term sustainability. We do not know what the future holds. Some of our challenges include changing demographics, student needs, the state of the economy, the K-5 monterization effort, and other factors that affect our specific community alone. A quote from Dale Turner is, "Some of the best lessons are learned from past mistakes. The error of the past is the wisdom of the future." In a previous meeting, I mentioned that the improper use of grants and revenue to offset expenses in a budget in previous year caused a fiscal cliff that we happened to step over last year. One example saw a BOE-approved budget at 2.3%, however, that same year proceeded to hire over 40-plus staff. Early in this term, I inferred that the high payroll spending bordered on fiscal irresponsibility. This practice was unsustainable. This is something that the current board inherited, and it behooves us to course-correct. Of course, we cannot over-course-correct. We must proceed with caution. We must be realistic. We must collaborate, and we must compromise. We need to cease the animosity between the board and the town council and ease the adversarial nature between the political parties up here on the dais. We are one community, one Enfield, and we should be actively working together to serve the public and facilitate student achievement. While we talk about our budget process being backwards, this year, it appears that the board and the council had an opportunity to reconcile our differences and avoid revisiting the budgetary appropriation come June by reaching a consensus between educational needs and fiscal resources. Unfortunately, we are failing to seize this opportunity, and we will now very likely be up here again discussing amendments to this budget later on this year.
Thank you, Mr. Kober. Anybody else want to go? Ms. LeBlanc?
Mr. Kober, I'd like you to start with our mayor regarding adversarial discussions because most of us on the board know how to get along and would like to get along with the town council and don't relive and relive and condemn people over and over again for the state of theatrics. In the original budget presentation, there was an ask of 90 staff that the admin had asked. Steve narrowed it down to 11.
Still not enough.
As a Board of Ed, we have to listen to the needs of the students, the needs of the district. 11 wasn't enough. And if you think you know more and that 11 is doable, go volunteer for a day.
You guys want to go? Ms. Pickett?
I was really encouraged last week when we sat in room, and Phil, you and I have lots of dialogue, and I do think that we work across party lines on a lot of issues. But I do think it's important that we do clarify some things. One is the fiscal cliff. So that's COVID ARPA funds. Let's just call it what it was. It was a lot of money that came flying our way for a very short amount of time.
That we had to use.
That we had to use, and I do want to point out, and this is not pointing fingers at our previous superintendent, us board had no say in the positions that were put into the COVID funds. Those are grant positions. We did not approve those positions. That was part of those, that budgeting for grants. The long-term sustainable planning for that is a misstep and is something that we're looking at carefully and intentionally building back. And when we talk about needs, I think it was very clear, and I hope I was clear the first time the budget was presented at the 5.33, that was not meeting our needs. So I would not call these wants, especially when we look at what programming and supports they're provided. The other thing that I think is really important to clarify, and Steve, you did a great job of presenting this to us when we were together, is that it's not just like we just get the teachers out of these tiers. Just hire the teachers. Forget all the other positions. These go together. So if I'm opening a SOAR classroom, I need a teacher and a BT. Those go together. They provide a program. I also want to talk about like high-quality programming. We're like barely trying to get there. So I think it's really important that we don't minimize the rationale that came with all of these, and, I'm sorry, Phil, and I like, I know that there seems to be hope of like some of our data. The data's going to speak for itself on the needs of our students and what we got to do for supports and services. So I think it is really important that we don't minimize that this ask is above and beyond. And I also think it's really important to clarify for folks, and we, he talks about the fluctuating in numbers, and he got all the way down to like 3.9, which is interesting now that the mayor says 4. That was like playing with a prepayment number, and that was also playing with lots of other variables that we don't know, and I think we need to continuously go back to like, what is our bare minimum to like keep us just operating? And like, this is not greedy. We're not asking for something additional.
I just want to add too, that MOU, the way I can compare it is like when you have a Christmas gift and you're going to buy your brother a $25 gift card, and they're going to buy you a $25 gift card. The MOU was nothing more than to create a public spectacle around a, whatever you want to call it. And like Amanda said, that was our money. No other town handled their Board of Ed shortfall like that. And we had the $5.6 million broken out to the exact penny. And when you have a chance, I'd like the list of the 40 staff members and the 40 positions we added in just one year. I'd also like to say that it was brought up at the council meeting that if we're going to invest in education, we need to see results. We had results. We had results with those 40 extra staff. We had results. It was data-driven. It was tangible, and these results aren't going to be good. And you know what? You know who's going to take the blame? The teachers. It's going to be the teachers' fault that they didn't perform to the level that they're supposed to perform at. So I'm not buying it. To diminish the conversation we had, to diminish Steve's work, I was disappointed. He knew that. We should be focused on a needs-based budget. Dr. Jerry said it. Dr. Jerry had a hard time just agreeing to the 5.6 because the needs are greater than the 5.6. And anybody who doesn't want to recognize that, I don't know what to tell you.
All right. I'm going to just jump in here. Probably going to cut my throat, but it's okay. So when I, so obviously, people know, I was on the board, then I went to the council, then I had, I didn't win, and I was off for two years, and then I came back. That's a good question. That's a good question. So my observance, while I was able to sit out there, you know, it's always the same. You ask, the number goes down. You ask, the number goes down. And it's frustrating to watch because all of a sudden, it's one side, not all of a sudden, it's always been one side's blaming the other. Like, okay, the Republicans always cut, and then when the Democrats came, they didn't ask for enough. And it's this back-and-forth dance that, sitting on the outside, doesn't even make any sense. Like, when you look at it, like, I'm hoping, and I don't know if it'll ever happen, but like, can we like just come up with a plan to move ahead, you know, at an even, steady pace that's sustainable, doesn't ask for the world, keeps taxes reasonable, and like, follow that plan? I mean, I know stuff's going to happen, but like, I mean, when I was putting my notes together for tonight, you know, and I had one thing, okay, so if we got, you know, what am I going to do? But my notes for both of them are basically the same. It's like, we need to, we need to have a successful school system, but that's also sustainable. And, you know, coming in this year, and then had to deal with this whole huge disaster of a fiscal cliff that punched me in the face when I got here, and, you know, then we had to go through this whole, like, this is what happened and that one happened. It's awfully hard to say what happened when I'm going by emails that I had to look at from other people and try to piece this whole thing together to tell a story. And now we have our full story. It's all out here. The council helped us out. You know, they took the shortage that we were in, right? They, and we started off with like, what, $500,000 maybe in our contingency, right? And we worked through it. Mr. Macchio came. He's revamped the whole thing. And it was a lot of work. It is a lot of work, and it keeps changing, but like, we have organized ourselves now. And I think that same organization needs to happen at all places in town. And then, you know, maybe, this is a pipe dream, but like, it would be great if we weren't pitting people against people, and we could just all be like, this is the plan that we have for Enfield, and this is how we're going to move it forward at a slow and steady pace. And that's where the frustration that I have comes from.
And I just, can I make a motion to go past 10:00 PM?
All right. So any of a motion by Tina to extend the meeting past 10 with a second by Dean? Can I have a show of hands in favor? There is eight in favor. Is there, oh.
None. Yep, no Phil.
Against is one for Phil and no abstentions. Okay, so continue on.
I just want to say, Charlotte, that you're not far off track on that because you remember the days, right, when the school system would say, look, we need to add guidance counselors, and we need to add this, and that's how we got sports back. That's how we got full-day kindergarten. But then we'd have to understand that we had to take cuts somewhere else. There used to be these fruitful discussions prior to the budget process where the school, granted, I didn't think we were getting enough then, and there were times in, I don't think I was on the board when we had the huge layoffs, but that you would have those discussions with the town council prior to the board preparation, and then the priorities would be given at that point. And so you're not off-base for wanting that because that's how it used to be. And, you know, you would have to sit here sometimes and vote for full-day kindergarten and vote for reductions in guidance counselors at, you know, the high school, but you were getting a benefit, you know, there was always a benefit to the negative for it. So you're not off-base in wanting that. I think it's just the reality that there was a one time that we lived in with that, so.
Go ahead, Ms. Kober.
Couple of addendum, I guess. So, Mrs. LeBlanc, to your question, I'm not going to be able to pull up that information because I wasn't on the board, but the Board of Education regular meeting minutes of August 23rd, 2022, you can review the minutes. Mr. Dreszek welcomed our 47 new certified staff members to the EPS family. Board member comments, yourself as chair, welcome the 47 new certified members. Mr. Ryder also welcomed 47 new certified staff members. And the budget for that year separately was a 2.31% increase. So just to...
Phil, that was welcoming new staff to the district, not necessarily new positions. So like, we get new staff, like a new kindergarten teacher who, like, we lost somebody, they left, and a new staff comes in?
Perfect. But if you guys want to dive into that, with a 2.31%, probably didn't cover your contractual for that year. And then, Mrs. Pickett, to your point, to your point where you are hiring things on grants and the board didn't see that?
We were not hiding things in grants.
That you were not seeing things in grants, that is part of the board's oversight role to review the spend as the fiscal responsibility of the board. So if you guys were hiring...
But, Phil, we don't, as a board, grants, and I think that was part of our grant presentation, we do not vote and approve on grants or submit like...
I'm not saying you would vote or approve, but you would have visibility to it.
Yes, and I was clear. There was plenty of conversations with Mr. Dreszek about the use of our funds and long-term planning.
But I'm just stating, it's not, the board was not ignorant to the fact of what grants were being used.
Can I just jump in and say, now you're all receiving a whole lot of information so that we don't have to relive this again?
Thank you.
So as a board, we can move forward and say, 85-point-whatever number are being paid for out of grants. That's why I give you all the information that I give you, so that we don't have to go through this piece, because we want to have one understanding of where we're at.
We want to move forward. Unfortunately, there's people on the board and on the town council that just want to keep rehashing, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, part of the reason why I'm giving you as much information as I'm giving you because the documents are live and everybody can have the same information to pull from.
And I think we're, just real quick, I think we're united in giving you credit for that. I think that's clear.
I'm not looking for credit. I just want us to, as a board, wrap this up for the kids, and it seems like we're in a location, and poor Dean is asking to talk.
That's okay. I just want to say, I'm the person that in that special budget meeting changed the wording of tiers to years. I like the idea of planning down the road. I'm not a huge fan of the 5.57 right off the bat, but I'm also not a fan of the 4. I'd like to see somewhere in the middle where we're adding more like 20 to 25 staff as opposed to 30 or 16, and then be able to grow that proportionally, maintaining that same budget level year after year, rather than ask for more in one year or less in another year, and then hit another cliff at some point. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Dean. Anybody else want to add anything else out in TV land? I don't see any hands raised, so, all right, so we can proceed to roll call vote, please. Mr. Gauss.
Against.
Mr. Kober.
No.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. Moving on. I got to find my, I got to find my agenda here. Hold on. Okay, number 11, new business, policy revisions, first reading. Mrs. Cushman, we have a long list of policies here.
You want to just start?
Oh, yeah. You want to go with 5131.61?
Yep. Policy 5131.61 is the chemical health for student athletes. Our current policy, 5131, addresses student use of alcohol, drugs, tobacco, and performance-enhancing substances. This proposed new policy from Shipman, specific to student athletes, aligns our district with the recommendations of the Shipman Policy Service and the Connecticut General Statutes. I would like to make a motion to approve the first reading of policy 5131.61, chemical health for student athletes.
So moved. Motion made by Ms. Cushman, second by Ms. Pickett. Discussion on this policy. Mr. Kober, did you want to add something?
Yeah, so this is one we're working through currently in our policy committee, a shift from our CAE model templates to our Shipman and Goodwin model templates, and this is going to be one of the first of a many we're going to see in the 5,000 series coming from Shipman and Goodwin. So there is a, some other policies that this will subsequently override, but there is, you know, consensus straightforward policy on here. So as more of these come up, we'll be seeing certain ones that we pass, and then subsequently we'll be going back to repeal the CAE version.
This isn't, this isn't, this is more of just a question. The board may remove students from participating in athletic activities in its discretion. Is it only, is only the board that has capability of removing a student from participation, or are there other parties? The administration, for example?
My understanding is that it would be the coaches or the staff at the school?
Yeah, so I think when they say "board" here, it's meaning the board's employees. So this is going to be the administration that would do this.
Yeah, I would confirm that. I believe it's talking about the process. It would start with the coach principal, and if there is an appeal process, potentially could come to the board, but generally, I think they're using the board in the most basic sense.
All right. So any other discussion? Okay, so sensing none, roll call, please. Mr. Gauss?
Yes.
Mr. Kober?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, 5141.23. Okay, 5141.23.
This is the policy concerning sunscreen application in school. In accordance with Connecticut general statutes, this new policy provides guidance on possession and self-application of an over-the-counter sunscreen product for any student who is six years of age or older while in school. I would like to make a motion to approve the first reading of policy 5141.23, concerning sunscreen application in school.
Motion made by Mrs. Cushman?
Second.
Second by Dr. Kalman. Any discussion? Mr. Coburn?
So a few words on this one. This is again just another Shipman and Goodwin model template. This one is probably identically just copies out of the state statute, 10 S212, so it's a straightforward policy addition for us. We do have a current policy that partially overlaps. I will note in our packet, it has this policy, but I don't believe it has the form. There is a form that's amended to this policy that if this passes a second reading, we posted with the form that parents or guardians, caregivers sign authorize that. So that's not visible, but that's a standard template form for authorization.
Any other discussion? Okay, so, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gauss?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yep.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mrs. Accree?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, 5200.
This policy, the use of private technology devices by students, provides guidance to district staff, students, and families regarding the use of privately-owned technological devices on school property and/or during school-sponsored activities. Updated administrative regulations specific to each school will continue to be provided in the parent-student handbooks to provide greater detail to family and students. I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of policy 5200, use of private technology devices by students.
Motion made by Ms. Cushman, second from?
Second.
Mr. Coburn. Any discussion, Mr. Coburn?
Keep my mic right on. So this is another policy. We had some good hearty debate through our policy committee on it. This is basically a Shipman template. And, you know, for those in the public, there's a lot of discourses on basically cell phones in schools and use of private technology. So the board has previously reviewed some of that. We had kind of not taken a stance yet, and this current policy is, I don't want to say bare bones, but it's a very straightforward just overview of definitions of what students cannot do. The policy doesn't, the board specifically, as a board, talking about the nine of us, is not taking any action on cell phones in school. It's predominantly delegating to the superintendent through administrative regulation, and then more specifically, we're empowering building administrators and principals to put their specific rules in their handbook. So I think our superintendent did a good job previously saying he doesn't make decisions in isolation, and that's kind of the, again, I don't want to speak for the board, but it seems the consensus is the legislative intent is to allow them to continue that collaboration. And as they write the student handbooks for next year and the administrative regulations and so on and so forth, that there is a, the schools are all in the same wavelength. So we do have three, there's three different, three through five schools, so they'll all have three different handbooks, but the understanding will be from central office that they're all going to be comparable, and then so on and so forth. So the board, again, is not saying much, but there'll be more guidance through administrative regulation, and then very specifically, student handbooks will address the school-specific rules for private technology devices by students.
Okay, so, any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Gauss?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
I'm abstaining from this one.
Mr. Ryder?
I abstain.
Mrs. Accree?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, proposed policy revision, first reading is 4118.5.
This policy is the employ use of the district's computer systems and electronic communications. This shipment from policy is a direct replacement of our current CAE policy, providing guidance to all district employees. This policy requires the superintendent to establish regulations in line with this policy addressing the incidental personal use of the district's computer systems. I would like to make a motion to approve the first reading of policy 4118.5, employ use of the district's computer systems and electronic communications.
Second.
Right, motion made by Mrs. Cushman, second by Mr. Coburn. Mr. Coburn, go for it.
So comments on this one, and I think our policy subcommittee chair did a good job explaining this one. So this is just going to be a version change from CAE's current policy to the Shipman version. We did also find several strengths in the Shipman version with specific examples. And then also, again, along the lines of the last one, this, at the legislative level, directs the superintendent to direct more administrative regulations on incidental use, incidental personal use of computer systems and devices. So just to clarify the, the intent of this.
Okay, any otherbody else? Okay, roll call, please, Kathy.
Mr. Gauss?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mrs. Accree?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I think this is the last one, 5118.3.
This policy, educational stability procedures for transportation coordination with the Department of Children and Families, is a policy from Shipman, a direct replacement of our district's current CAE policy, provides more accurate, updated procedures that reflect the current practice based on legislation. It addresses the issue of transportation of children in DCF custody, once DCF has determined that it is in the best interest of a child to remain in the district's school, the child's school of origin. I would like to make a motion to approve the first reading of policy 5118.3, educational stability procedures for transportation coordination with the Department of Children and Families.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Cushman, second by Mr. Coburn. Mr. Coburn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is another policy. We touched on pretty good in policy committee. It's basically coming from state law due to the interchangeable collateral of nature with DCF. This one is specific to transportation of our unhoused students. There are some other policies that we'll subsequently be talking about in committee 5118.1 and 5118.2, with the end goal of, again, consolidating these policies and the overall streamlining process.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Gauss?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mrs. Accree?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right, moving on to 11B, which is, we are going to do that after item 17, executive session. So, Board Committee reports, Curriculum Committee?
Yes, the last curriculum meeting was held on February 20th. Mr. Mark Doobie and JFK Principal Sarah Brown provided an overview for restructuring the music offerings at JFK for the 25, 26 school year. They explained they are working to preserve the tradition of music in Enfield. This restructuring is also a result of the elimination of band, orchestra, and chorus in grade five. Students in grade six, seven, and eighth, this new program will have the opportunity to join band, orchestra, choir, and have general music classes. Also available will be pull-out lessons for the students, 45 minutes a week, and this will allow for more growth for the beginning players. And during the March 25th Board of Education meeting, Mr. Doobie will give a presentation on the K to 12 music program in our Enfield schools. The next curriculum meeting will be March 13th.
Mrs. Accree? Anybody else for that? Nope? Okay. I just want to say that Mark Doobie's presentation and Mrs. Brown's presentation was a great reimagining of how to more effectively deliver music at JFK, and they have future plans also for fifth grade in another year or so that we're talking about. So I thought that was really good, that we're trying to make it work for Enfield and keep that band tradition going. So next item is finance and budget.
So the subcommittee has not met since the last board meeting, where we read in a full monthly report. So there's nothing further to report, finance and budget, beyond that our next scheduled meeting, the subcommittee, will be held Tuesday, March 4th, at 5:30 PM at the central office.
Okay. Policy Committee?
Our next meeting is March 18th at 5:30.
Okay. And Leadership Committee, our next meeting is March 5th. Okay, liaison reports, school reports and updates. Who would like to go first? Mr. Coburn?
So, quick usual shout-out to the friends and family of Henry Barnard. Please continue to monitor the Big Cat Newsletter, which is now published via Parent Square. Just two notes I want to highlight out of there is the Scholastic Book Fair. Barnard and Crandall both have two family nights in the schedule, and the PTO Scholastic Book Fair is also offering an online shop that is open from now to March 7th. And then I did just want to point out, spring conferences are coming up for, I believe, Barnard and Crandall for Wednesday, March 12th. You can sign up through the link through Parent Square, and spaces are filling up quickly. So if you're interested in conference with a teacher, please get that done.
Okay, anybody else? Dr. Kalman?
Just a very quick, oops. Excuse me. A quick update for Kite. Kite, in partnership with Head Start, is bringing the Connecticut Science Center back again for another play and science night at Stowe. All families with students' grades pre-K to first grade are, excuse me, all families with students' grades pre-K to first grade are invited to join on the, on the, on that date. Registration is free but required. Please email Adrian Snow at asnow@enfieldschools.org or visit Kite's Facebook page. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I'd like to have a shout-out to Principal Brown for bringing me around to the new JFK yesterday. It's an amazing place. They have lots of cool maker spaces and, and things like that, and I'm hoping that I'll have more to share as we build our relationship and get to know what's going on.
Cool. All right. Go ahead, Ms. Pickett.
I would just quickly share a reminder, folks, for Parent Square, the newsletters that are sent out there. And then I just want to really thank our PTOs. As a Parkman parent, there was a, like, a penny war kind of challenge, and the students really showed up. And then the PTO is like, okay, instead of one grade getting pizza, everybody will get pizza. So I think our community always chips in, and I want to just thank our PTOs, not only at Parkman, but at Enfield Street School as well, and thank them for their hard work and all the things that they do. And remind folks about spring conferences, because I want to thank you, Steve, for adding that, and I think it's a really important opportunity that families take advantage of.
Mrs. Accree, you look like you have something from the desk of Mr. Dupere.
Yes, I do. So for Crandall, a few things were already mentioned by Mr. Coburn. The important dates he wanted to specify tonight was the Scholastic Book Fair from 6 to 8, but the next one will be February 28th, between the hours of 6 and 8 PM. On Thursday, February 20th, Crandall successfully completed a lockdown drill. We are thankful for all students and staff for their cooperation with these safety procedures. Again, parent-teacher conferences will be held on March 12th at Crandall. And lastly, Read Across America Spirit Week will be held from March 3rd to March 7th. Students can read a book and join the fun activities that are planned each day of the week. Thank you.
I just want to say Hazardville Memorial, they are getting a pretty cool award tomorrow at Chick-fil-A. Well, is that Hazardville and not Chick-fil-A?
Chick-fil-A is coming to them.
Chick-fil-A is coming to them. Okay. Well, maybe Chick-fil-A is going to drop their chicken nuggets back off over at Raisin Canes again. I'm just kidding. So they, they won $1,500 in prizes from Chick-fil-A from a contest, so I thought that's pretty cool. March 3rd through March 7th is Read Across America Week. So if you have time to sit down and read aloud with your child, that would be awesome. And then Buzz Robotics, its competition season starts. Their first competition, well, not their first, but one of them that's near us, is at Hartford Public High School on March 29th to the 30th, 9 to 5 on those days. If they qualify, they will be going to compete at the Big E on April 3rd to the 5th, which we went to last year, and that was really awesome to watch. And if you want to see them, just give Ms. Mart an email, and she will give you a schedule so you can watch them in action. Okay, so joint facilities. Okay, so we had our last meeting on March 13th. So they said that Alcorn is still pending with the state. Interesting development with the Parkman roof. So I have the email here. So Mr. Dag sent an email to the Grants and Contracts Specialists for the Office of Grants Administration, asking, because we are now in the beginning phase of the preref process, if we submitted the paperwork to do the job on the roof, if that would have a negative impact on getting the funds for the roof. And then the response basically was, it's possible that having the roof replaced prior to an upcoming renovation could affect the status of the project or the reimbursement. So yes, there is a state statute, because I asked this for clarification, yes, there is a state statute that says if you had work done on a roof and it was bonded, and then you use the building for something else, or you're fixing it or whatever, as long as it's still for municipal use at some point, then you didn't, you do not have to deal with the whole pay it back like we had the issue with hail. But because we would be submitting paperwork, basically right after submitting paperwork for the roof, that the state's not going to pay out twice. So pick one. And basically, that then fed into the conversation that we had of how we need to, for the, for the preref anyways, we have to have a 10-year plan. So we can realign the roof phasing with the pre-K, prereferrendum work. That increases the likelihood of our grant acceptance, and it saves us on our HVAC five-year assessment, and it saves on rework or ineligible costs. So we had that discussion, and that discussion will be carried over to preref, so maybe we can get the two on the same page to get a 10-year plan and use what we already have on the town side. We talked about that in there, too, that we would already use the, the study that we had done on the town buildings and then just add the school buildings to it. And then we also had discussion about the work order documents that you had a question on, Mr. Coburn, that the answer was in the update. And then, basically, right now, there's a bill in legislation to not allow non-certified laborers to do plumbing, electrical, and HVAC. And right now, there's a waiver from the state to do that. So if that passes, then we might be in a pickle. Also, the library roof is not done yet, obviously, because of the snow and everything and the ice, but it's at least halfway done. And I think that was about everything we talked about. And they're down an awful lot of staff and management and stuff over there, so.
So, Madam Chair, before we move on, just two quick questions to the joint facility. Superintendent talked about, like, operationally, being down a classroom at the Stowe Early Learning Center. Did that come up? And did they give a timeline on when those repairs?
No, because now we have an even larger issue at Stowe. No, because now we have an even larger issue at Stowe with the roof leaking. And now we're possibly going to have to move kids to...
We have moved kids.
Yeah, but I'm saying we may have to move them to another school if it continues to get worse. Like, the roof is definitely leaking. Like, I saw pictures, there's like bags hanging out of the ceiling covering electrical outlets, because, like, junction boxes, because water's coming out.
There was no timeframe, no timeframe on the repair for the roof leaks because of the melting and the location of the leaks. With the snow up there, they literally can't identify it. And it's actually, the leaks are actually between the membrane and the actual decking of the roof. It's, so there isn't a quick, easy timeframe on it.
Second question.
Building and Grounds is actively involved in trying to get Eagle Rivet, I believe is the company that they're utilizing.
Second question for Joint Facilities. I know it was publicly shown that we lost some custodians at the high school. Are they planning to rehire all those? Or are they going to use this opportunity to consolidate jobs? Has there been any discussion on that?
That was not discussed at Joint Facilities. Right now, I guess they have people working overtime, taking from different pieces of DPW. But I'm assuming that that is a conversation that the town council will have to have. I have heard rumors that when COVID happened, we hired more custodians to cover the extra cleaning needs that we had. And I do not know if when COVID was completed that all of those stayed or not. So that's a discussion that town council is going to have to have during their budget, for sure. Anything else with that? Okay, all right. It was Joint Facilities, Joint Insurance. We have an invite to go sit, say no, on Tuesday, March 4th? Okay. Joint Security Committee, our next meeting is March, I didn't write it down, March 14th, Friday, March 14th. Enfield Mental Health Committee?
Our next scheduled meeting is March 12th.
Preref Committee, you want to go on this one?
Sure, so the preref committee met for the first time on Wednesday...
Two weeks ago.
Yeah, February 12th. A chair was picked, a vice chair, and a secretary. And we're hitting the ground running this week. We are meeting at Hazardville at 5:30 to tour that. And then our meeting is at 6:30. We will tour Whitney and then hold the rest of our meeting. If anybody would like a tour from the board, you can meet us at Hazardville and go for the tour, and then tour Whitney, if you'd like to, so. And, yeah, we're just moving along. Oh, we're meeting this tomorrow night. It's late, and I agree, Kathy, I'm like hot in here. Yeah, so we're meeting tomorrow night at Hazardville at 5:30. So if anybody would like a tour of that, please feel free to join us. And then the tour of Eli Whitney, so I'll have updates every week. I just checked my calendar, I don't have the invite from Insurance on March 4th.
I don't even know if I have an actual invite for it.
Okay.
That was, it was originally going to be just a separate meeting. And then I, through Charlotte, I probably didn't send you the invite. But I opened it up to the full group, because I said that you two ladies wanted to attend. And then Mr. Belinda also opened it up to his constituents on his side. So we made it into a joint insurance meeting. So I'll send you, I'll forward you the invite now.
Okay, Approval of Minutes, regular Board of Ed meeting minutes, February 11th, 2025. And, we're going to do it all together, special Board of Ed meeting minutes, February 19th, 2025. Can I have a motion to approve both of them together?
So moved to approve both meeting minutes.
Motion by Mrs. LeBlanc? Second by Dr. Kalman, any discussion? Mr. Coburn?
Just a quick note for transparency, I did email our recording clerk. There was one vote that was recorded erroneously, that'll be fixed on the final version.
Okay, any other? Okay, so I need a show of hands in favor. I have eight in favor. Any against? One abstention. Okay, all right, so, Mr. Coburn, do we have any, we don't have any approval?
We do not.
No counsel peril today. Mr. Ryder, do we have any correspondence or board communications?
Mr. Ryder is unavailable, but no.
Can I just add in, under, I know this isn't, but the technology tour that was planned for Thursday, due to the number of folks who are unable to attend, we're going to be rescheduling it.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, executive session, I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved to discuss procurement.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Coburn. I need a second. By Mrs. Cushman, a show of hands to go into executive session? Okay, I got nine in favor, none against. And then we will not be coming back to the TV after, but we will come out to vote. So have a good evening.